All right. Good evening, everyone. It's a pretty full house. It's nice to see everyone tonight. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. O'Connell, roll call, please.
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Councilmember No?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Regina. We will be moving on to our ceremonial matters for tonight, and we have a proclamation in recognition of Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. And I'm going to read this for you right now. Whereas California's children deserve to grow up in a safe and nurturing environment, free from fear, abuse, and neglect, and whereas 2,365 reports of abuse and/or neglect were made to El Dorado County Child Protective Services in 2021, of which 226 were found to be substantiated following investigation, and whereas in the city of Placerville, children are victims of one or perhaps several types of child abuse each year. Whereas children who have been abused or neglected have a higher risk of developing various health problems as adults, including alcoholism, depression, drug abuse, eating disorders, obesity, suicide, early death, and certain chronic diseases. And whereas providing community-based prevention services to those families can help avoid the cost of protective services, law enforcement, and judicial system, foster care, and the treatment of adults recovering from child, from abuse as children. And whereas the El Dorado County Child Abuse Prevention Council seeks to elevate the message of our community, recognizing and reporting suspected child abuse to protect all children in El Dorado County. Whereas prevention remains the best defense for children and families, and we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas pinwheels are displayed to increase the awareness of child abuse and focus on the positive message of preventing child abuse and neglect by supporting families and strengthening communities during Child Abuse Prevention Month. Now, therefore, I, Cara Taylor, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Placerville, state of California, urge all citizens to join me in recognizing this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families, not just in the month of April, but throughout the year. All right. Would any, anyone like to comment on this item? No?
I'll, I'll make one comment, and then I'll, I'll open it up for the public. I have, I have a couple of young girls. They're six years apart. My youngest was born right at the start of the pandemic, and, you know, every day as I'm raising these little humans, I am amazed and terrified by their ability to accept whatever situation they're in as completely normal. And this ability, um, it makes it possible for them to adapt to an ever-changing world. It makes it possible for children to love and forgive without condition or judgment, and it makes it possible for children to feel joy whether they're brought up in poverty or affluence, but it also makes it possible for them to be manipulated and exploited and abused. And so this work is so important to raise awareness of this, and, um, not just for the grownups that are tasked with caring for and protecting children, but also for children that might be experiencing it, to know what abuse is and to know that it's not normal, and it's not okay, and that there are resources available for them. So, um, I really want to thank the Child Abuse Prevention Council for their hard work, and I would like to invite Victor Antonio and Michelle Vien up to accept this proclamation and make their comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, my name is Victor Antonio. I'm the Executive Director for New Morning Youth and Family Services, and you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Michelle Vien, and I work at Casa El Dorado, and I'm also on the Board of CAPS.
And Elizabeth Blakemore, who is, um, our leader and Deanna Santana, our coordinator for the Child Abuse Prevention Council, they, um, they wanted to extend their, um, uh, their inability to not be here, but sent us in their stead, so. Uh, we wanted just to say that we, we are so appreciative of the support from the community regarding Child Abuse Prevention Month, and especially, um, they want me to convey their thanks also to Chief Wren, uh, councilmembers Borelli and Saragosa, and City Manager Morris for attending last week's event at the Police Department regarding raising awareness for child abuse prevention. Last Friday, we had an incredible event there at the Diamond Springs Fire Station. Every Fourth Friday of April, um, throughout all 58 counties, uh, we memorialize the children that we've lost to child abuse and neglect through the violence that they've sustained. And one of the things that we tried to do at that event, as well as the proclamations here at the city and at the county, and that is to try to raise awareness regarding the continued, um, staying that this has on our society. And we are hoping that, uh, as we continue to join in our partnerships and as we continue to, uh, put forth efforts at eliminating child abuse neglect, that we would see a decrease, not just a decrease, but an actual elimination of this insidious trade of our society. And so, um, I don't have to, uh, restate or to inform you relative to the data and the statistics regarding, uh, children who experience abuse and neglect. Uh, but let me just say this, that one of the things that we have learned, and that is that, um, through these types of trauma, um, we have uncovered a factual evidence that this type of event that a child experiences, it remains with them, sometimes permanently, and affects them for the rest of their lives. And so as we, as a community, join together, um, not just as leaders, but also as community members, as people of this county and of this city, um, it's hope, it is our hope that you would, uh, join, join with us and, uh, make it a community effort at, you know, regarding this thing of raising child abuse and neglect awareness and prevention. So, uh, with that in mind, I would, um, just thank you for your time, and, um, God bless you guys.
Can I just say one comment? Um, I think this is a really important point. You don't have to know what child abuse is. You don't have to know what it looks like. Uh, the point is if you suspect it, that's what you report.
If you could what?
If you suspect it. You don't have to know. Just suspect and report. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
And please remain right there, and I'll walk down.
What?
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, geez.
Well, Cara's coming back to the mic. I just wanted to kind of put my two cents in. We did go up to the police station, and we planted blue windmills, and it was a really nice ceremony, but I just wanted to, uh, tell the community, because I know you're probably seeing blue windmills around town, and that's what it's all about, is this child recognition, uh, Child Abuse Recognition Day, so.
Would anybody else like to comment on this item? All right. Seeing none, I'll close public comment, and we will move on to closed session report. City Attorney Ibrahim.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the council did meet in closed session today on labor negotiations with Local 39 and provided direction to staff.
Thank you. Item five, adoption of the agenda.
All right. I have a couple of things I'd like to do. Um, I'd like to switch, due to some travel times and extenuating circumstances, I'd like to switch 12.1 and 12.2. If, if you're all in agreement. And then I have another one. I'd like to switch item nine to after 12.6. Because I plan on pulling item nine, which is a consent calendar item. I don't think we need to-
What is it? Nine is?
Is consent calendar.
It's items pulled from-
Right. So I want to, I plan on pulling an item, and I just, I just don't want to do it before we take care of some of the other important stuff, so.
So say it again, what you want to do.
So we're going to switch 12.1 and 12.2 and move item nine to after 12.6. That's my request.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, aye. Item six, 6.1, Dick's Sporting Goods Check Presentation, and Mr. Zeller has this item.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, tonight, we had expected to be joined by Joey Chisenhall of Dick's Sporting Goods, uh, for a presentation, but he could not make it. So I asked, uh, our Recreation Superintendent, uh, Matt Lishman, to step in and give the council and public an overview of what we were highlighting tonight.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of the council. My mom was in the audience, and Supervisor Thomas. I just want to let you guys know, we recently had applied for, um, a grant, it was a $10,000 grant through the Dick's Sporting Goods Foundation, um, for Sports Matters to help save youth sports, and, um, we were awarded the grant, uh, for our Recreation for Youth Fund. Um, like Terry said, unfortunately, um, Joey Chisenhall, uh, was unable to be here, and he was going to bring the big giant check and, and, uh, do the presentation and all that, but something came up, and he wasn't able to make it. But don't panic, the check's already in the bank. Because we got the check a while ago, so the money's already there. Um, so I just want to let you guys know, this, this goes, um, for those of you who don't know what our Recreation for Youth Fund is, it was a fund that was established back in 1996, uh, to help any children, um, who are in need that maybe can't afford to pay for recreation programs. And so if they qualify on certain programs, um, then they are eligible to, um, sign up for a recreation program, and the fund will pay half, half of whatever the program is. It doesn't matter if the program costs $20 or $150. The, the program will still pay, pay half of that price. And, uh, to this day, we've never turned away a, um, scholarship that was requested, so that is fantastic. Um, and this fund is basically just brought on by donations of members of the community and grants like this, individuals, um, you know, we advertise it in our activity guides, and so anybody who ever wants to donate, um, any amount is always welcome. Um, currently, the fund actually, because of this giant donation, um, has an estimated balance since our last Rec and Park Commission meeting. I think we've probably given some scholarships out, but it's right around $13,768.27, so the fund's doing good right now, um, but we always got a, um, we always, you know, we're always looking for, for other donations, so, um, it's pretty exciting, and we just wanted to share that and celebrate that with Dick's Sporting Goods, and, like I said, unfortunately, couldn't make it tonight, but, um, so yeah, that's what it's all about. If you guys got any questions or-
Any questions?
Great information. Thank you very much.
And I did want to let you guys know, flag football started tonight.
Ooh!
So it's a go.
That's cool.
And I wanted to add one more thing, Mayor. Um, Matt's very humble, but he was the one that applied for it, and it's a $10,000 grant, so, uh, it was a, it was a great effort by him, and we should recognize, uh, Matt's efforts and all of our staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. And please extend our gratitude to Dick's Sporting Goods, too, for their, their generous donation.
Mayor, if I could perhaps go back in correction on the adoption of the agenda?
On the agenda, okay.
Could you? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I was a little hasty on the agenda section, so we-
I will make a motion.
I was thinking the motion.
That we accept the agenda as proposed and what we agreed on.
Okay, so we have a first and a second.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Item 6.2, this is a presentation on the city's marketing program through the El Dorado County Chamber of Commerce, and Mr. Morris has this report.
Yeah, just quickly, I'll introduce Jody Franklin from the Chamber, the Visitors Bureau. She has made a couple of presentations now to our Economic Advisory Committee, and I'm very impressed and very happy with the work she's doing. I thought it was important to get it out to you and to the public to see what is being done, so I'll turn it over to Jody.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I saw the huge agenda you had tonight, so I'll try to kind of move through this quickly, but, um, if you have any questions, of course, you can always ask. Okay, uh, just a kind of an overview of the scope of work that we talked about. It's been about six months now, so this is a good time to kind of check in and see, see how things are going and what we've, um, what we've done. Basically, what we had talked about was, um, bringing these three business districts together. Often, uh, the historic district gets all the love. Well, um, now we're really wanting to bring in Placerville Drive and, and Broadway, too, as well as tying them together in kind of a, um, a more meaningful, you know, like they're not separate entities. So, um, we have found several ways in which to do so. Um, kind of the first 90 days, we started right out of the gate in Oc-, uh, first part of October, um, promoting any events that were already going on, so if there was an event scheduled, um, then we wanted to put some money behind that and just help promote those events, um, that we're already doing. We don't have the bandwidth to, to create an event, nor the desire, but any events that are already going on, um, that are in the city of Placerville, we really wanted to support those. So we started without, right out of the gate, and with paid social media ads and, um, and emails and stuff to the database. Our database of about, I think there's about 8,000, um, Visit El Dorado database, so promoting those events through that. And, uh, this, after the first 90 days, uh, we, uh, we measured. So this video is a video that, um, the Main Street merchants put together, paid for themselves. It's just a, a group separate, um, and they promoted it, uh, on their own as well. So we really tried to take the assets you already have, or the assets that are out there that are, um, promoting Placerville, and elevate those. So we took that video. They've, um, it's already gotten, I think at this point, was 421 shares or something, so it's, it's obviously really resonating with, um, with locals. And we put it out to Sacramento, um, during the month, uh, kind of getting that, uh, thought process of shopping, and we knew that it was coming up. Christmas is coming up, so we wanted them to, um, recognize the charm of shopping, um, in Placerville, and, um, it was, it did very well. Uh, we focused on Sacramento, so we did a little earlier out, in November. Uh, cost per result was about a dollar five. Um, and I explained to Peak that when you, um, when you focus on people that are right around you, they've got more of a familiarity with you. As you start moving out, the cost per, per result is going to get more expensive, so Sacramento, if we went, uh, took this to San Francisco, it'd be more expensive, because you're trying to familiarize people with your brand and with your place. So, but it did really well, and, um, and I think it really feels like Placerville, so I wanted to show you that.
Jody, quick question. What qualifies as a result?
Um, well, whether, what they did, we, what we wanted them to do. So if we wanted them to watch the whole thing, that's a result. If we wanted them just to click on it and see it, that's a result. If they wanted, if we wanted them to move to, um, the landing page, we took, uh, we took that five-minute video that was created for the whole street. We brought it down to one minute, and we, we had them click on that. They watched that, and they went to the website, so that's what we wanted them to do. We wanted that, to tease them a little bit, and then go to the website.
Thank you.
Okay.
Dave, I think if you just click on that, it should start it. There we go.
Get some sound.
What makes downtown special?
Everybody knows everybody. It is like Cheers. When you come in.
Something that's family-owned and operated, is that you're going to get a lot of attention.
Downtown especially has that small-town Americana feel that, like, I didn't even really know I was looking for that until we got here.
It's a great place for families. Lots of memories made here.
There's lots for everybody.
Where do I not shop?
That's like one of the coolest things I always tell everybody. You don't have to go anywhere else. Like, it's here. Like, you can find everything and anything that you need here on Main Street.
Okay, so that was a little teaser to push them to the website where they can find out more information, and, um, I feel like it really, it's the people behind the place, the feel that we wanted, um, to give people, like, uh, these are real people that you're, um, that you're patronizing. Oh, no, I don't want that. Moving on. Okay, so then, uh, then we did, uh, as it got closer to Christmas, um, more of a, uh, holiday video. It's a short 20-second, uh, video. Did I miss the, did we skip something? Now go back. Okay, so let's, let's stay here. Okay, um, this was a Broadway Shop local video. So we took, um, some businesses from, uh, Placerville Drive, businesses from Broadway, and we put them together, and this was, um, right at Thanksgiving when people were trying to decide what to, where to shop and what to do for Christmas. They were doing their, um, you know, uh, the Friday, Black Friday thing. We focused on locals, so we wanted to make sure they're not going anywhere, they're not going to Folsom, and so that's why your cost through, through play would be much lower. It's only three cents. We wanted them to watch this entire video. That was the goal here. So we got a lot of impressions, a lot of reach, and, um, and this did very well. It's, um, there we go. Let's watch this one, too.
To me, what makes Placerville so special is the community.
We really try and do business with smaller brands, so it's fun stuff that you can only get here in Placerville.
I think it's the hometown feel. You are going to find a lot of one-of-a-kind things here that you won't have anywhere else.
I was just going to say.
You're the Cheers coffee shop owner.
So welcoming.
My name's Katie, and I own The Meadow in Placerville.
I love, you know, when people come up with a big cart of flowers. I'm like, I get to sell plants to people. I mean, that's why my favorite part.
Shopping local is important for several reasons. One is you're actually supporting families in our local area. Thing, there's 24 different families that are actually involved in this.
Not paying shipping.
Not paying shipping.
Exactly.
People that have gluten sensitivity or have celiac's, and we are dedicated to catering to those people.
And so all the products we carry here are gluten-free. Started serving my product here about four months ago, and it's, it's been a hit.
For example, when we had the Kelldorf fire, you know, the community really came together. We had campers out front, people that didn't have somewhere to go, just watching the community do the donations and do the feeds and, and help out, but it really, I think, showed how good of a community this is.
When you shop for your gifts at local stores, you keep them open and thriving. They bring in more products and draw in a bigger crowd.
The community really embraces shopping local, which is amazing.
We just love our customers, and they love coming in.
If you don't shop local, then this is closed down, and again, that magic is gone.
You get to come to Placerville and shop local.
Shop local.
Shop local. Shop Placerville.
This is the place to be.
I own this joint. Come to Lori.
Okay, so that was a two-minute video, so I know from, um, when you're online, you're flipping through, you go through two minutes? That's a long time. That's a commitment, uh, these days. Five seconds is a commitment these days. So they, uh, we had, um, a really successful, um, cost per playthrough, through-play, meaning they watched the, that entire video, uh, and those were locals. So, um, they really resonated with that hometown feel, with those people they know, or people, you know, where these businesses are. We tried to use the freeway to, um, kind of direct them from where you're starting in, in historic Main Street in Placerville. So we're kind of just laying the groundwork for that, and, um, and that was great. We had, I think that one was a hundred and some shares, 128 or something, so that's another level of commitment. Okay. This was a, uh, a holiday. Wow, did I skip one? Uh, this was a little holiday one we put together, 20 seconds of footage that we already had. So could we go back one, so we can look at the stats on that one, too? Okay, yeah, there we go. So this one was put together just to kind of showcase the magic of Main Street, um, the kind of, the Christmas, uh, shopping feel. Um, again, that was a very short commitment, only 20 seconds. We had some, some great results with that one, too. So now we can skip over. Okay, so this was a, uh, we started putting together digital assets, and, and you may remember after, um, before I was saying that after this, this program is over with, I want Placerville, I want you to continue using us to market, but if you don't, I want you to still have some digital assets, video, stills, um, that sort of thing that you can use to promote your city, um, and not have to ask, uh, somebody for it, and, um, and you can own them yourself, and you'll have access to those, uh, those assets. So this was a shop local. We had a photographer go around and take lots of pictures of, um, the inside of shops, what the features, that, the top one there is Man Cave. So, um, then we put that out there for the shop local campaign. This was all, these were all done in the first 90 days, so really kind of bombarding people during that shopping time, um, showcasing the magic of, uh, Main Street and others. This, um, particular, um, with the photos, I think this was, uh, Facebook, Facebook and Instagram, and we took images from all three districts and put them on there. So we're just really trying to spread people, spread it out and, and show them all love. Uh, this was kind of interesting, because out of the, uh, five out of the six, uh, top, uh, Instagram shares were Plac-, was Placerville content. So out of Visit El Dorado, our five out of the six things that we were promoting, um, the top, uh, go-getters were the Placerville content. So we know we're in the right spot. We know we're, we're hitting the sweet spot here, so, um, hopefully we'll continue on with that, with that love. Okay, and then the next 60 days, um, we are creating content for, um, each one of those districts. So, um, we have a, a newsletter that goes out, the e-newsletter that goes out, and, uh, to our database, like I mentioned, and we try to showcase some of each one of the three districts. So, um, for instance, there's, uh, incredible things to do, um, in Placerville for the history buff. There's, um, three great, uh, breakfast spots you never heard of. There is, um, and we just use one of every single district, one place from every single district. So that sort of content, every single month, goes out with a very specific, um, call to action from Placerville, all going back to that page, um, and going out to the database that we already have. And then, uh, we're trying to repurpose a lot of the content that we have. I mean, we're, we don't want this to just be a one-and-done, just like I had mentioned with the, uh, the Main Street video. We take that, you know, they hadn't seen it for a month or two. We brought it back. They started sharing it again, a different audience. They just start sharing it again, so it's, uh, we really want this to be evergreen content for the most part, if at all we can, and, um, the events won't be, but other than that, um, we're just trying to leverage what you've already invested into another format. So for this, we made travel stories, and I don't know if you're familiar with that, but on Google, that, those top little bands up there, those are usually travel stories. So we just took some of the content. This one was for, uh, Third Saturday Art Walk, um, and we, we used it for Instagram. We used it for the travel stories, the Google travel stories, and then, uh, we just created, um, a platform for TikTok for Visit El Dorado, and we put some music behind, on it, and went out to TikTok with that. So, um, really trying to, anytime we created something, use it on all our different platforms, leverage the investment that's already been made and will continue to make, and, um, put it out, put it out again. We just updated this. Um, and then this feeds directly into, well, it kind of gives Visit California a heads-up that we've got content, because we have, we share a platform. So I created it one day, and the next day, not even the next day, like the, in the few hours, I saw it on, um, Visit California's website. So also showcasing the gold country, so we got a lot of love, and I just, I did this one because I just wanted to learn how to do it, and we hadn't done TikTok before, so I just wanted to see how much, how much we were going to invest in this time and effort. So obviously, it, it, they ran with it, so we're going to continue that. So obviously it, they ran with it, so we're gonna continue that. This was another one that we did. It was a travel story, but we used some of the different districts and things to do, family-friendly things to do. I think this one was affordable, kind of looking at the family angle, and included it with some Visit El Dorado's assets as well. Okay, so the database was the other thing that I had talked about before. We have a database, Visit El Dorado, and we've grown that over, over the years. There's about 8,000. And in this, right now, it's very important to have your own database, somebody that's interested in speaking to you and having you speak to them, because a lot of those algorithms that we're, we've been taking advantage of are going away and for all of our protection, I guess. But these are people that are actually saying, I wanna hear from you. So in the time that we've started, we went to the travel show on behalf of Placerville, incorporated a Placerville content into that. And all these other things we've been doing, we've already got, and we added a Placerville-specific onto our website. So they can click on to, I wanna hear about El Dorado, I wanna hear about Placerville, or I wanna hear about industry-specific news, like tourism news. So we've already got 509 opt-in for that. And we just started with a public relations person contract for Visit El Dorado that will be, will be hosting some media here in Placerville, too. So kind of building upon that database. And then once the end of this contract, we, those are all people that have said, I'm interested in Placerville, and we can turn those over to you. We can, so you'll have those, that database. Hopefully you continue to talk to them, because if you don't, you lose them. Okay, and then Gold Bug was part of the next 60 days. We did a, kind of a Gold Bug-specific campaign with them during March, February, March. It's good springtime content, family, you're looking for things to do. That was very successful. Cost per click-through was, what, 25 cents? So that one, I think, went a little bit further out. We started trying to kind of pinpoint some other spots, so not just locals. We wanted to go out to Sacramento, we went over to Granite Bay, kind of drew maybe 50 to 60 miles around just to see if we can get them up there and if they hadn't heard of Gold Bug. This was that PDA video that we, it's the Main Street Marketing Group, that we brought back to life again. And that was in February and March, and it's just started, started rolling. There's something about those smiles and those people and all that that people just really resonate with. So we got some more mileage off of that. And like I said, we're just trying to repurpose what we have and put it back out there while we're creating new content. So, there we go. Okay, in the next 60 days, we are moving towards, we talked to Paul Cockrell. And we know that we love his stuff, and in the past, I've always just borrowed it with credit, photo credit. But as I mentioned, I really want you guys to have something that you can promote Placerville with. So I just put this one out, we did this one on Instagram, it got a lot of love, and that was a Paul, a Paul picture. So we have, we have now, up next, we're going to be creating more, contracting with him for more images. So we want to move this into more of a quality of life, so we wanna feature the El Dorado Trail and how that ties into all the Placerville districts. I mean, that's, that's a huge, huge get. We want some of those, you know, specifics that we had talked about before, the different districts, all the little, the highlights of those different districts, maybe the monuments. Kind of show people enjoying the place, people enjoying the city, and you can use those for economic development, you know, moving forward. And then some of the iconic ones that he's so known for, too, the Bell Tower and all those. And what I told him is I want some of those iconic things on the others, on the other two districts as well. And then some of the trail, the trestle, you know, just bringing all those things together to kind of paint this overall picture of Placerville and make it really useful for you, you know, from, in the future. Okay, that's, that's what we've done so far.
Thank you, Jody. Great presentation. It's exciting to see all those videos. I've gotta say, they really made me feel happy just watching those videos.
Right?
You're doing a good job.
Yeah, and the interviews that we did, those were all, those were, we told no one to say anything. That's what they said. And I just, I put a smile on my face when they're like, um, you know, we came here and we didn't even know, we found things we didn't even know we were looking for, or something like that. And I was like, oh my gosh! That was great. So anyways, I think that's why the genuine, the authenticity, I think that's what was really resonating with people.
Yeah, I would agree. Do we have any questions for Jody?
Not so much a question, but Jody, thank you for the update.
Sure.
Really appreciate it. And I know I've, I've been seeing all of these come up, pop up on my Facebook feed. I do my best to try to share, reshare as many of these as possible.
Thank you.
Couple of my different pages, so. And it's great, I think the content is at a steady enough clip where it, you know, it's not, it doesn't get stale, but at the same time, you're not being overwhelmed with articles or with, you know, things in your feed as well. So I, you know, that's great. I love the drumbeat that you've had on it. So thank you for that. I just, I just wanna say, great job. I love the fact that Gold Bug Park got so many impressions. I think that's great. I think, you know, it showed a real interest in, for folks, and the fact that we, you know, the City of Placerville owns a mine.
Right, right.
So, you know, that's just great. So again, I just wanna say thank you, no questions, but just wanted to say thank you and really enjoyed the presentation and the update.
Thanks. I didn't include the hashtag Placerville campaign that we've been doing, too. And that really, if people use that hashtag Placerville, then the, those images come into our feed. So we know, you know, we want that sense of pride for Placerville, for the locals. But outside of that, we want them to know where they're at and, you know, and just saying hashtag Placerville. And then we can share those, those user-generated images are really important because people always wanna see their stuff.
One question I have, Jody, is, in the presentation, it mentioned, you know, referring people to the landing page. And is that the Visit El Dorado landing page?
Yeah, it's a Placerville-specific. We had kind of two pages, Placerville-specific.
Okay.
So any of those businesses that we talked about, we made sure they had a listing on our, on our, on that landing page and on our website. So, and also, you know, if they have a website, we can push them off to that, we have an image of that. So we have basically a nice little landing page for them, each business. Some of those businesses didn't even have a website. So basically, we're giving them this little microsite and then an opportunity to get on Google Maps to shoot them to their business. So it's a Placerville-specific page, but then also, we made, a few years ago, and we used the holiday content for that, the hometown on Main Street or Main, something like that. It was a Main Street hometown feel type of website or landing page, and it was only for Christmas time. So we have kind of two, the one we push all year round, and we keep gathering businesses on there. I have, I have shared, please send me your stuff. I give them a, a page that they just complete, and then I can put that stuff on there. Rarely ever happens, I go ahead and go out there and get it, you know, have somebody in this office go get it myself. But, yeah, no, we're adding businesses onto that.
So this is, so there is not a separate URL for Placerville as part of this marketing program?
No.
That would be part of our digital assets, it's all housed with the Visit El Dorado website?
Yep.
Okay. All right. No other questions?
I have, Jody, do you, I know you have a, a listing of all the folks that belong to the Chamber of Commerce. So, but these businesses do not have to belong to the Chamber?
No.
To be featured? So, and I think you just said it, but I, you kind of lost me. How do you, if these folks don't have a webpage, how are you, are you sending reps around? I, you said, I know you said you yourself are, are you visiting businesses?
Well, we'll find out and see what they do have. If they have a Facebook, that's great, we can pull something off the Facebook and however they describe themselves. We don't wanna describe them in a way they didn't describe themselves. We take a picture off of that, we get whatever information, store hours, all that stuff, and make a real listing on it that looks like all the other listings, so they don't, they don't look like lesser than. If we can't even find a Facebook, which is rare, I think I've only found like two businesses that don't even have a Facebook, then I go ask them if I could take a picture, and I just create, create a spot there. And that's where, that's where their information lives, until they get a website or until they, if someplace we can push them off to, that's where their information will live.
Okay.
But there's only been one, maybe two of those, those types.
Thank you.
Quick question, these landing pages, they're, they're not going away. You guys?
Nope.
You're gonna, you're gonna hang on to them, you're gonna make sure that they?
Yeah, we're actually doing, updating our website now, the Visit El Dorado website. So we're migrating all that over to the, the new, and it's all the same stuff, but on a new format. And we're getting so much traffic on that that we've really had to upgrade quite a bit. But with all those listings, not only Placerville, but all the listings we have, it's quite a project just migrating all that information. So, yeah, it's all getting migrated over.
What you're doing is great.
Thanks!
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jody, once again for that presentation. Would anyone from the public like to step up to the podium and comment on this item?
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville. And I am so glad that we went with the Chamber of Commerce instead of the original consultant that was proposed originally. I think this is, they're doing a much better job. And they are local, and I'm impressed. I am really glad.
Thank you, Sue.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor and members of the council. I'm Kathy Lishman, Matt's mom. I'm glad that they're using Paul Cockrell's photographs. They're, they're a wonderful representation of Placerville. I happen to know that last night at midnight, he was somewhere taking pictures of the Milky Way.
Oh, wow.
And two things. One, I wanted to know if the miners on Main Street could be funded out of this program. I know they came last, you know, last meeting and asked for donation from the city. And I know that the city is already funding this program up to $50,000. So I also was curious how much of the 50,000 had been spent so far. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy. All right. No, you don't, yeah. My understanding is that the funding for this program has already been designated as part of the program cost. So it's just, it's just for that program. Seeing no other public comment, I will close, comment on this item, and we'll move on to brief comments by council members. Start with Jackie.
I watched the BOS meeting, as I think most people in the audience did, so that was a good six hours for everybody. Saturday, I participated in the homeless camp cleanup with the city, so really wanted to thank the volunteers. And I really wanted everyone to appreciate the staff as much as I did. As I was working next to that staff, I realized those are the same staff members we have who show up in the middle of the night for our emergencies, who work the long and hard hours, and we're giving up their Saturdays also. So I just want everyone to know that we just have the most incredible staff. Thanks.
Thank you, Jackie, that's a great comment. Michael?
Yeah, so I just, I participated, as previously mentioned, in the Child Abuse Prevention Month that we had at the police station. And it was, it was, unfortunately, you know, we got a little bit of a rain out, but we were still able to put, you know, the pinwheels out, and the chief, myself, were able to record a couple of messages. And it did hit close to home as well on that issue, because you talk about neglect and child abuse, and, you know, a couple of years ago, we had Roman Lopez who lived right across the street from me, a terrible tragedy here for our Placerville community. So it brought that back to me and just the idea of, you know, being vigilant and if, as they've said, you know, if you see something, say something. So that was, I was really honored to be part of that as well. I listened to a very long Board of Supervisors meeting on homelessness. I wanna thank our District Three Supervisor, Wendy Thomas, for being with us here tonight as well. And I'll have more to say about, on that issue later, but, so thank you.
Thank you. Patty?
I joined Michael and, up at the police station and planting the windmills, and it was just, it just makes you feel good when you're, you feel like you're doing a little bit to try to get this message out. I attended the Board of Supervisors meeting and sat for six hours and watched. It was a long meeting, Wendy. So, but, and then just our usual things that we do. And I also wanna join Jackie in thanking everyone who participated, our city manager and everybody that participated in the cleanup. It's something they don't have to do, and they did, and it's, we can't appreciate it because we're up here and it's down under the freeway, but just looking at the pictures, it's beautiful. Thank you. And I see all the railies carts that are lined up. Did you leave that there for some people would get the idea? Just tell us what they, what they cleaned out from underneath there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Patty.
All right. I had a busy couple of weeks here. I had the honor of walking my daughter down the aisle a couple of weeks ago, which was a real treat. Kind of consumed my last couple of weeks, so that was, that was, that's one of the things I like to note. And, good times. And the staff, you guys, I, you know, I'm just gonna say it again because you guys deserve. You guys are amazing, the amount of time and energy put in. Some of you even drag your spouses along. Poor people. But they're, you know, ride-or-die kind of spouses, so they, they show up when you, when you, when you ask, when you call. And they did an amazing job cleaning up. This is not the first time, and they do, what you don't know is they have spent quite a bit of time, one weekend a month, I think, they, about? Give or take?
Give or take.
Give or take.
That's what we're trying to do.
You know, they, they do this and they go out and they do a variety of different projects around the city. And, you know, they don't get noticed, it's not in the newspaper, it's, it's not always reported here, but they're doing it to make our city better. And they're our staff, and they are amazing, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. Just, they're giving back in different ways. Yes, and they could. On that note, there's also Rise and Shine that is this coming weekend. There's still time to sign up. I know that, I see, I know, one, two, three, four, and I don't know how many other people, probably, I don't know. There's quite a few people that have, that have signed up. Hopefully it's another, the 400 people again. And I already went over this last meeting, so I'm not gonna go over it again, but there's still opportunities to sign up at different places. You can go on the, is there a link on our website still? Okay, there's a link on the City of Placerville's website. You can look up Rise and Shine, it's not too hard to find on the, on the internet, and sign up to participate in a one-day event where 400 people gather and they, they separate and they do different projects around the city to beautify it and just clean up and make it look great. And it's, and it's worked for several years now, it works great. I attended Pioneer Energy Board, and, you know, I thought you were supposed to get appointed to positions when you didn't show up to the meeting, but I showed up to the meeting and they appointed me anyway. So now I am on the Finance Committee for Pioneer Energy. We'll talk about more of that later. And that's it for me, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dennis, you kind of stole my thunder, again.
Sorry.
I was under the weather for a lot of the last little bit, and then I was out of town, too, for spring break with the kiddos. But, so unfortunately, I missed attending the Board of Supervisor meeting in person, but I did watch remotely to this topic that we'll be discussing later today. And I wanna thank Michael for attending the Child Abuse Prevention Event at the PD in my stead and representing the city. And I also want to just echo the sentiments of my colleagues up here in regards to the amazing and really hard work that our staff does. Now, as Patty mentioned, this homeless site was under the freeway. It's work that will, by, in large, go unseen by the community, but they were out there anyways. And it's important work, it was really close to our creek and our waterways, and it needed to get done. And even though it's, it's not, you know, gonna be widely noticed, it's greatly appreciated. So thank you. And, and I also wanted to highlight the Rise and Shine this Saturday, which is a great event, and I encourage everyone to participate in it. All right, with that, we will move on to the Consent Calendar. All right, with that, we will move on to the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of all resolutions will be waived unless the council member requests otherwise.
All right, I'd like to pull item 7.5 for later, discussion later in, in item nine, and then I will have to recuse myself from 7.6, as, I will be recusing myself from 7.6, we'll vote on that later, but, because I have a financial interest on some property that is on Broadway, and so I wanted to, I need to recuse myself, so I'll do that.
7.6 or 7.7?
Sorry, 7.7.
Okay.
My apologies, yep.
All right. So we would need a motion to pass the balance of the Consent Calendar, mine is 7.5 and 7.7?
So move.
Okay, you have a motion?
Can we ask a public comment on the Consent Calendar first?
Let me open the Consent Calendar up for public comment. If anyone would like to comment on item 7.1 through 7.7?
I just have a question, does that mean that you, when you go back to 7.5, if the public wants to comment on that item, then when you're discussing it, they could?
All right, seeing no comments, I'll, I'll close public comment on item seven.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a first and a second, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Regina. So, are you going to step away now and leave 7.7?
Nope, I don't need to step away, I just need to not, just recuse myself.
Because it's on, just for the record, because it's on consent, Councilmember Thomas can stand the dais, and we can proceed with an abstention.
Okay, so now we need a separate motion to pass 7.7.
I'll move to approve 7.7.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Council, Councilmember Thomas?
I recuse myself.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Regina. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to public comment on non-agendized items, this is item eight on the agenda. I see a lot of new faces here, so I'll just kind of go over how public comment works a little bit. Everyone who wishes to has an opportunity to step up to the podium to speak. We ask that you voluntarily state your name, for the record, it just helps us connect bases to names, it's voluntary, and that you keep your, your time to three minutes. And please remind me, is this working, the timer?
The timer is working.
All right, the timer is working, so you can monitor your own time up there, please do stick within three minutes. If you would like to be, if you would like staff or council to follow up with you after the meeting, there are cards on that back table, and you can fill in your contact information, and leave it with Ms. O'Connell up here, our city clerk, and someone will, will get back to you. Public comment is, it's not a dialogue, so you, and you speak, you address the council, so you would just make your comment at the end of public comment, if there's questions that come up that are of importance to the community, we may have staff address those at my discretion. So with that, I will start with oral communication, and anyone wishing on non-agendized items, anyone wishing to step up to the podium may do so at this time. If you would like, come on up to the podium.
This is regarding homelessness, I don't know if I'm?
This is on non-agendized items.
So I just speak on 12.2?
If you are speaking specifically about the agenda item regarding the proposed Navigation Center, then you would speak on 12.2. If you're just making a general comment about homelessness, or something else entirely regarding homelessness, you can speak now.
Okay.
Thank you, council and mayor, my name is Rose Thatcher, and I'm representing the Mobile Home Park on Coal Springs Road called Hidden Springs Villa. I've brought some of my friends and neighbors with me, I'm sure you've heard this before. The purpose of us being here is that, many of you know, we have a lot of problems with homelessness, but we're getting to the point where the seniors are feeling unsafe and insecure about them coming into our community. We do have barriers up by the owner, no trespassing, but however, they are still coming through. I do understand, we all do understand, that the police cannot monitor it 24/7. The other problem that we have, that we feel that is coming into the park, is that we have a drug dealer in there who is selling drugs to the homeless population, that's a biggie. We are just wanting to be safe in our elderly age and enjoy our community. We also want our families to know that we are safe, and we are asking that we do something about it. I do realize that the owner does have a part in trying to make this better for us, but as a senior community that wants to feel safe, we would like you to hear our plea. I also heard that the staff is doing a wonderful job in the creek, we see that every day, and we do appreciate the cleanup on that part. So, that being said, we do feel that the police, their hands are tied, but we'd really like to have more patrolling, if possible, to see if we can get some of this under control. Thank you very much for listening to us there, again, we're from Hidden Springs Villa Mobile Home Park, thank you.
Thank you, Rose, thank you.
Good evening again, Kathy Lishman, I had a couple of things, one, on the agenda, it says, please observe six feet of social distancing. The chairs are really on top of each other, I wondered even if, in the future, that they could be spread apart a little more. And then I wanted to mention about, I wanted to ask about the homeless camp cleanup, if the homeless actually help you clean up, do they actually help clean up what you're cleaning up? And then third, I wanted to go back to the miners on Main again, they asked for a donation from the city, the city is always saying that they don't have enough money, or they don't have enough time, and so I think, I mean, they come to the council meeting, first time I heard about it, clear blue sky, I think that they need to take time to raise the money. It took me four years to raise the funds for the Monument Garden garden part, that's absolutely beautiful down at the end of the street, and, so I think, you've got to be careful, when you find a project that you really want to support, how does it balance out with the other needs of the city? Thanks.
Sue Rodman, good evening, council, a member of the Placerville Fire Safe Council, and I am here to remind you that we did get a little break with some rain recently, but as I drive around the city of Placerville, I see storm damage left over from December, from the big storm we had in December that knocked down quite a few of our oak trees and live oak trees, and I'm seeing a lot of it is now very dead, and if it's not yellow, it's brown, and we need to take care of it. And I know our staff is overworked, and I'm wondering if there isn't something we can do, there's a group, Tribal Fire, who's willing to come and help us do things, there's also a new little fire academy that's trying to get started, that would be willing to help us do some work, and it's up to us to contact these people and say, okay, we would like to have your help, because I know Tribal Fire even has a chipper. So, I mean, there is, there's a lot of help out there that we can get, and with our staff as overworked it is, with the projects that we already have online before the storm dumped some of these trees in half, and these guys need, need some training and need some work, let's put them to work. And everybody here, 100 feet on your property, get out there and get it cleaned up, because the last thing we want to see is grisly flats in Placerville.
Good evening, Jane McGinnis, just a couple of things, first of all, I wanted to say, yes, the staff is amazing, the staff of Placerville is amazing, they are so helpful, they're absolutely valiant in emergencies, I mean, I've seen people who work for Placerville do some pretty dangerous things to help citizens with their problems. I managed property here in this area for many years, both residential and commercial, and that means midnight emergencies and problems with downlines and with water, and they turn out, they come out at the most awful hours, and they stay until it's done, and I just, we don't appreciate them enough, we don't say it enough. The other thing I wanted to say is, I'm, I was so delighted to see this proclamation on child abuse, I wanted you to know that the child abuse percentage among the homeless is quite large. I hear it a lot from women, I don't talk to men about it, because it's really not appropriate, and there are plenty of men working with the homeless who can have that conversation, but I've been working with one woman now for almost three years, and she has taken, it's taken her three years to get to the point where I can say, you know, God loves you, without her just pushing back against that. She's been on the street for 11 years, she has the drug addictions that are so common among victims of child abuse who have not been treated for it. Basically, you're gonna see the victims of child abuse in drug addiction, with PTSD issues, but the, the one that breaks my heart is the one that I've been working with on this, and that is, they can't believe in the goodness of God, because they can't believe in the concept of a good father, they're not able to even envision that, and it took, it's taken about two and a half years to get us from the point of, I will not touch a Bible, to having her pick up a box of Bibles and carry them into the upper room to be of help to the thirsty Bible study, and I think, I think Jonathan said to her, you know, there's Bibles in there, that's, the books are in there, she said, I can touch the book. But we've gotten to the point now where I can tell her and remind her that Jesus loves her, and she says, I know, I know. It shouldn't take that long for someone to be able to at least not refuse the idea of Christ in their life. It's gonna be a long way to haul her over the finish line into belief, but we cannot allow the victims of child abuse to go untreated, unrecognized, or unreported, so if people are afraid to report it, because they're afraid of being sued, that's a good campaign to focus on, to get them past that, so, that's it.
Thank you, Jane.
It's a hard act to follow, she's, she's got a great heart, she's really becoming a Mother Teresa to the homeless women. So, I'm glad we can talk about homelessness and skip the, the Nav Center on, in this topic here. Sunday morning, I'm not gonna mention her name, but it relates to the child abuse, she was telling me, I won't mention her name, but I, we invited her to church and ended up, Jane wasn't feeling well, but I picked her up in front of Hangtown Motel, and she came, and I'd given her a ride before, whatever, and helped, but she came to church, and she sat in the back row with me and my daughter, and my daughter's husband, and she sat through the worship, but she, then she left, and I thought maybe it was restroom, but then after it was extended into the message afterwards, and this is not so uncommon, she, she was waiting outside, she couldn't stay inside because the door was closed, and she had, she told me stories of being a three, four, five, six, 10-year-old, but all the way from three or four, and, and the mother was strung out on meth. And my father worked with three US presidents and committed to, commuted to Washington, and I have a picture of him in the, in the Oval Office with JFK, but her mother was in another room with another meth addict or shooting up heroin, three, four, five, six, 10-years-old, and this is not uncommon. You look at the father, the father figure in the men in prison, and it's 80 or 90% negative, no father, and so this is great that you had this proclamation against child abuse, and any way you can publicize it, I'm all for it. One other thing, the women, women on the street, I've been, I'm, I was homeless at one time, just fell through society, and maybe dealt with a little mental illness, but you can retrain your brain, and I want you all to believe that, because it is possible, and it's been proven really in millions of cases, but in, in my time remaining, just, the women on the street need the safe parking, and it is child abuse for anyone, I'm gonna meet with Dr. Manin Sella to get the exact numbers, but the numbers of homeless students in our county are beyond what you would imagine, 200 or 300, we've got to get them out of the cars, and at least a safe parking, God bless you.
All right, seeing no other people walking up to the podium, I'm going to close public comment at this time, and we'll move on to item 8.2, which is written communication, do we have any written communication?
We had several items of written communication came in in the last few days regarding item 12.2, and I think those have all been forwarded to you, council members, that we received, some of the latest this afternoon, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, could I make one more comment, I meant to do this earlier, I just want to respond to Sue Rodman on our relationship with Tribal Fire, we have been in contact with them, we have used them in the past, and we are in contact with them now regarding future projects that we want to do in the city, so I just want to let you know that we are doing that, so.
Do you want to mention anything about the COVID protocols and?
Yeah, the, the six-foot distance kind of carryover that we've had, we will review that and see if we still want to continue that, we'll, we'll bring back a recommendation on that, so.
Okay. All right, so at this point, we are, we're gonna skip item nine, because we've moved that to the end of the agenda, and we're going to move on to item 10, 10.1, waive the full reading, make any amendments to, and introduce an ordinance adopting a military equipment use policy, and improving the use acquisition, collaboration, and seeking of funding for military equipment. And Chief Ren, you have this report.
Good evening, mayor and council, so, this legislation was passed, I believe, the end of last year. Assembly Bill 41 required a greater level of transparency among law enforcement agencies in the state of California to disclose kind of a broad list of, of equipment that the author deemed was military equipment. As part of that legislation, it required us to bring this forward to our governing body, which is the council, and present to you with the policy, along with our inventory list. Bear with me here, and our ordinance, sorry. In your item, you'll see our list of what we currently have on, on, on hand, and I believe that's, I believe that's it, I mean, you can read it, it's just, it was, I'm not gonna get on my soapbox and talk about this right now. I get the intent of it, I get the legislator's intent, however, they're not in office any longer, so getting ahold of them to kind of clarify some things has been kind of a, a... some things has been kind of a guessing game for us to try to meet the legislative intent of, of what the assembly bill was, so. And when I talk about military equipment, it's just anything with black Velcro or something rechargeable, darn near. And it's not, I spent six years in the military. Nothing that we have currently deployed in the street is military, so. Our patrol rifles, you know, Placerville Police Department's been using patrol rifles for the last three decades. We do have pepperball guns, however, they're not deployed because we haven't been trained on them. And we do have flashbangs, light, light sound destruction devices, so.
So what you're saying is it's been a frustrating process?
It's been, it's been interesting. I mean, you, so we, I tried to just, you know, solicit information regionally from our, from our other law enforcement partners. But even in speaking with some of their chiefs, they're like, "We don't know what they want. We don't know what they're trying to get at," so.
So for, for the public, just to kind of summarize and let me know if I'm off course, but this is a, we, in order to comply with recently passed legislation, we needed to formalize the policy that we pretty much already have in place regarding the police equipment that is considered military. And of, of that equipment, Placerville PD has patrol rifles, fire, flashbangs, and pepper spray. And that's the only military-grade equipment that you currently have in your inventory, correct?
That we, yeah, that we utilize out on the street. We, and it's not, it was, none of it was procured from the military through like the 1033 program. It's stuff that we brought to the Council requesting to buy during budget years ago, and so, so it's been daylighted. It's just now they got this more formalized process, so.
Okay.
And, and just to add two more details to that, the list of the military equipment inventory is posted on the city's website with Police Department. It's available to the public for review, and we will have to do an annual review, and the Council will have to annually make findings, basically confirming whether the inventory should remain and whether those particular types of devices should be employed by the city. So, you should expect to see this again next year.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a gift that keeps on giving from the state, so.
Unfortunately, this is a classic Sacramento legislation of a solution looking for a problem. You know, it's, next time, chief, you have, you know, a grenade launcher or a saw, you know, squad rifle in the car, please let me know so I can be the first to test it out. But unfortunately, you know, this is a, a time and time that you have to use in the department on something that, I get the intent originally of military-grade, whether it's an MRAP or some other type of vehicle out on the streets, but that's why we have an open process as well as, as local government, so that if those issues did come up, there's an opportunity for the public to see that anyways. This is just sort of added time and a waste of expense. There's no, like, book in Sacramento that this is going into that are being carefully monitored by some public servants. So, I apologize to everybody for a waste of their time, but I digress.
All right. Are there any other questions for Chief Wren at this point? All right, let's go ahead and open this up to public comment on item 10.1. All right, I see no public comments, so we will, we'll close that and bring it back to the Council for a motion.
I'll move for adoption of the ordinance.
A second.
All right, I mean, introduction of the ordinance.
Okay. Second. Okay, so we have a first and a second. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 12.2. This is to review El Dorado County report and motion on homeless and provide direction to staff on how to proceed with the county on options. And Mr. Morris, you have this report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to be fairly brief on this because I, I think, as you mentioned, many of you saw the Board of Supervisors meeting. I have included their, their slide presentation in here for information, and I'm going to go through, through a couple of things and then open it up, and then I'm, I'd like to, if you'd like me to, at the end, I can come back and assist with recommendations and how we might move forward with this. I'd also like to mention before I begin, Daniel Del Monte, who is, I'll get this right, interim director of Health and Human Services for the county, is here tonight with us, and also Supervisor Thomas, who, as you know, made the motion at the Board of Supervisors meeting, as well as others that have been aware of this and following this item. So, as you know, we've been dealing with the homeless issue for several years now. I, I didn't, I was going to put a date on that, but I don't know how far back I need to go on this. It's been a while, most of the time that I've been here at least. And as you recall, in April of 2020, the city and county adopted a joint policy statement on homelessness. I included that document in here. I'm not going to review that, but that was kind of a starting point of, I think, us trying to work jointly with the county to try and get some things done. In the spring of 2021, so last spring of this time, as you recall, we put together a request and went to the county and, and said, "We've got to do something. We're worried about fire season. Can we do something to stand up some sort of facility, campground, whatever, prior to last year's fire season?" That just did not come together. There were obstacles that we ran up against, and anyway, a lot of things happened between that time and now, but that, we did not get that done. So, coming forward now to do this year, in, in April, on April 19th, so last week, the Board of Supervisors held a meeting, very comprehensive report and, and study showing what different things could be done. Daniel Del Monte, who was here, made that presentation to the Board of Supervisors. Part of the, the report included a recommendation of potential sites for both short-term and long-term navigation centers to operate. Going back a little bit before, I believe it was last November, the board directed county staff to go out and search for properties that potentially could meet the need to provide navigation centers in the county, countywide. I will say, and I said this at the board, and I'll say it again, a little bit disappointed that the five of the six sites that we came back with were in the city of Placerville. And I said this to them, it's a little bit surprising to me that these are the only sites that, within the entire county, well, I should say, within the Western Slope is primarily where we were looking, that, that met that need. Regardless of that, they came through and, and made a motion. I first want to list those sites and so that you're aware of those. The first two are 1940 and 1970 Broadway, which, if you know the names, are the Motherlode Motel and the Gold Trail Motor Lodge on Upper Broadway. Two, two motels in the city that not in the too far back were, were actually remodeled somewhat and are, are, you know, have completed that remodel work. The next one is 471 Perro's Road. I put on here 2820 Cold Springs Road also. It's the Masonic Lodge, which is for sale. It's a vacant building, but it's on the corner of Perro's Road and Cold Springs Road. The next one is 3057 Brew Road, which is the Health and Human Services offices, and they had proposed using a section of their parking lot to potentially create structures that could work on a, on a short-term basis. Next is 340 Road is, which is the site next to the El Dorado County Jail. As you recall, this was proposed at one point last year as a potential site, and some work was done, working with the sheriff at that time, as a potential site next to the jail. And then the final one is noted as Perks Court property. I don't have a specific address for that. I'll just say Perks Court property, which is located, I describe it as kind of under the Weber Creek Bridge along the, the Highway 50, where the Weber Creek Bridge is. So those are the six sites that were identified. And I just wanted to quickly, if I can, if it's all right with you, Mayor, I will read the motion that was made by Supervisor Thomas because I think that's very pertinent to what we are looking at here, and, and how we can then move forward and work with them on, on finalizing what might be a solution to what we're looking at. So the first thing was simply to receive the presentation, which, which they did at the meeting. Number two is authorize the chair to sign the resolution that declared a homeless shelter crisis declaration in, in the county. That's important because it enables the county to move faster to get a temporary, short-term facility up and running, hopefully, prior to fire season, like we were hoping to do last year, and we didn't get done. Hopefully, we can do this year. I'm not going to speak to the specifics of that. I might ask Daniel, if you have questions, I might ask Daniel to, he can probably speak to it better than I can, and there's some, some slides in his presentation also that speak to that. The next is to direct staff to pursue two short-term project sites, 1970 and 1940 Broadway, so the two hotel sites on Upper Broadway, for non-congregate shelter, and Perks Court for a short, short-term congregate shelter, and move to grow, towards negotiation of a lease, development of sites prioritizing the placement of homeless individuals in encampments currently located inside the city limits. I think that's an important part of, of that motion. Number four, direct staff to pursue Perks Court for a longer-term navigation center in addition to working with the city of Placerville to explore the feasibility of 471 Perro's Road in order to move toward negotiation of a lease and/or purchase of one of these sites to operate as a longer-term navigation center in future years. Number five, direct staff to work with the city of Placerville and the Upper Room to explore the feasibility of relocating the Upper Room to one of the short-term project sites. And then number six, direct the chief administrative office to work with the city of Placerville to secure additional law enforcement resources and come back with a memorandum of understanding if a short-term project at 1970, 1940 Broadway is selected. So, I just wanted to, to review those. That's kind of a starting point, I think, with where a discussion can happen tonight, and then, and then we can go from there. With that, I think I'd like to turn it back to the Council for comments, questions. Again, I, I have my own opinions on maybe what, how we move with this, but I'm going to leave that to you, and, and I can add to that and, and give recommendations and, and add detail to that if you would like as we go forward, so.
All right. Thank you, Cleve. I also want to mention that we have Wendy Thomas, Supervisor, here tonight, who will be able to take questions, as well as direct, Acting Director of Health and Human Services, Daniel Del Monte. So, with that, I will bring it back to the Council for questions, but just know that these resources are available to you. I've, I've got a couple of questions in regards to the locations. Wendy, I think this question is for you, but was it your intention in the motion to pursue both of those sites as shelters or to do, you know, to look into the feasibility of both of them and select one?
Good evening, Placerville City Council and staff. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight, as well as the Placerville community. My motion was intended to ensure maximum flexibility, recognizing that this is a very fluid issue, that especially with the demand to stand up a short-term solution in time for, for fire season especially, you never know what you're going to, you know, deal with in terms of negotiations, in terms of assessing the feasibility of a project. And so, you know, the goal was, we are also constrained by finances, and so that will be a strong determining factor of how much or what we do, and we will be relying on staff and our consultants to do that. So, my, my motion was intended to preserve maximum flexibility, that as our staff and our consultants move through this, they will be able to come back to the board with recommendations. And I think I can speak that there is a strong realization by my fellow colleagues of the need to completely lessen the impact on Broadway. That was made loud and clear while we not only address the imminent danger of fire, but help our homeless residents move to a more appropriate housing situation. So, I hope that answers your question.
All right. Thank you very much. It does. And one, one more question, and you may be able to answer this, or perhaps it's from Mr. Del Monte, but why, can you, can you let us know and let the public know why the Broadway locations are more desirable than, say, Brew Road?
Yes, there, there were some, Broadway can be, is probably the quickest solution, and I will certainly lean on, on Daniel as our, our staff for, you know, to, to give you a very complete answer as well. But Broadway is the quickest to stand up, and there are also reasons why that, that might also be a more palatable solution for folks to move out of the encampments. Research shows that especially around, it's, it's an easier transition when it's a familiar setting, and, and that part of Broadway is perhaps a more familiar transition on a very short-term basis that then will allow us to, to move folks into a more appropriate, longer-term navigation site. Also, Health and Human Services, that, that parking lot there, actually, let me have the Daniel address that because, yeah, you, he's the person that deals with this intimately, so. Daniel Del Monte.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the Council, Daniel Del Monte, Health and Human Services. So, with the, the clear direction from our board on November 9th was, you know, give us options that can stand up quickly and can address the concern of fire danger. So, given that, the, the Broadway location, or really any hotel for that matter, that could have been available, is the quickest to stand up. There's rooms available, you know, folks leave their, their rooms on a daily basis or, or stay up to 30 days at times, so the, the properties can be available at a given time. And as Supervisor Thomas indicated, having that project located in proximity to current encampments, a, a key sort of foundation to how these, wherever these projects go will address fire danger is outreach tied to the project is how you get into these programs. And so if there's a project right there, we have outreach staff that'll be contracted with Volunteers of America, who have significant experience implementing these programs, and they'll be able to provide direct outreach right there. And for navigation centers that are located in, in areas of blight, in areas where there's a, a large number of encampments or a large numbers of unsheltered residents, they have the biggest impact in that direct area. So, from a facility standpoint, the quickest, just negotiate a lease and, and have the contractor have staff there. And from a services standpoint, could have the biggest impact on Broadway, just having the proximity right there.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions at this time?
I do.
Okay.
So, I guess there's, there is some leaning towards the 1970, the furthest east property, I believe. How, we, there's, how many rooms are available, or how many beds are available for that, in that facility?
So, 1970 has 34 rooms available, and 1940 has 21 rooms available.
Okay. What is the, how would you characterize the breakdown of the availability of those rooms, given that? Because I, I believe, you know, unfortunately, the, the, the Board of Supervisors voted to, on a 3-2 vote, to discontinue the one up in Pollock Pines. Because, for whatever reason, once they discovered that they had it in their neighborhood, months and months after it had been there, they thought it was bad. And there was, and as far as I could tell, there was really no reason for them to think that, other than their own fear. And it was disappointing that they discontinued a viable operating site. And, and now, Board of Supervisors seems to think it's just fine to put it in Placerville, which is, it's astounding to me that they could come up with those same conclusions twice, twice, with, given a very similar, similar input. And, and here we are. So my question is, there's a, there's, did you say 34?
Correct, yeah.
There's 34 rooms there. Some of those people from, and that's why I brought in the whole Pollock Pines, they're going to be in June, I guess, about, approximately sometime in June, that'll be discontinued, that site?
Yeah, June 30th, our grant funding runs out to operate Project Room Key, correct.
Okay. And so those people potentially will be relocated to this site. Is that a fair statement?
That would be ideal, so as to not return these 20 households to, back into homelessness.
And these are, and these are, I would say, more elderly, more at risk, health-at-risk pay people?
Correct, yeah. Pre-existing health conditions was a criteria, and targeting seniors as well. And there's veterans in the program as well.
Okay. And then there, we would, there would also be some recognition of some, some beds there for discharged patients from the hospital. Is that a, is that a, that's a possibility, not necessarily a, you haven't made that a policy yet.
Yeah, there hasn't been much discussion, but there, there could be, as discharging from institutional settings is a component of the COC's homeless strategic plan, that can be overlaid into some of these beds as a consideration, if that's the interest of the, the board and, and the city as we work together on this, sure.
Which makes a lot of sense as well. So, the real, in my- So the real, in my calculations, we're going to move 20 people there, let's just call it four beds for Marshall Hospital, that leaves 10 beds left over for additional people, 10 to 12, maybe even 14, if we don't use those. So that's the, that's plus or minus, because I know there's variables, and like Supervisor Thomas said, this is a fluid situation, and it changes probably daily. But that's, but we are looking at moving those people from there down the hill to that location, if and when it is stood up on June 30th at that point.
So there's been some discussion from the board in terms of concern around an exit strategy for folks up there, so nothing's been formalized, but that certainly has been discussed as a potential.
Okay. By the way, thank you for taking your time out of the evening to come down here and answer these questions. I think it's really, it's a really important thing for the city to hear, and to be able to have you here and answer, you know, important questions is critical, so thank you for doing that. I know that you have long days at the county, and so we don't want to make it anywhere, so I'll quit talking about that. The shared impact, was there, how much consideration was there in your deliberation in selecting sites to have a shared impact between county and city? I mean, how did that come about?
Well, so, as was stated earlier by our city manager, he indicated that the request initially came from the city to the county to consider sites for potential projects. And so from the policy statement, that led to, of course, our sort of shared direction in trying to come up with solutions. The board's direction was clear, to bring back options. And so we just had a robust process to figure out sites, locations, program options for consideration, and those options can be discussed, and the board gave their subsequent direction. So as was mentioned, Supervisor Thomas added to the motion to have a particular priority on encampments that are impacting the city of Placerville. And so it really has been kind of an ongoing building block upon building block to get us here, and we're just providing the funding and the options, and we could figure out those types of strategies to help support both county and city jurisdictions in this effort.
Okay. One more question. When we talk about short-term, we're really talking about two, more likely three years. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, we're limited within our grant funding as to what can afford these projects. There really only is enough funding to operate a single project at a time, given our current grant funding. So assuming that, we're talking about a shorter-term project that would operate, as you mentioned, for, you know, one to three-year process, ideally with a longer-term facility in the works, perhaps an acquisition with the roughly two and a quarter million in CDBG funds that the county pursued in partnership with the city, tenant improvements provided, and, you know, to get that facility situated. And once it's operational now, we can close down the shorter-term site and begin operating the longer-term sort of facility.
Okay. You brought up one more question for me. Thank you. When you talk about funding for only one site, are you, do you mean that out of these six sites, it's yours, unless funding comes from some other source, you could stand up just one of those six sites with the current funding source you have?
So thank you for the question and reminding me. So as staff had presented to the board of supervisors, a single project serving 60 individuals, as the operating budget for that would be a little over a million dollars. And so Supervisor Thomas's motion, which the board approved for one, provides flexibility to explore multiple sites. Without a doubt, if we had funding for one site for 60 individuals, having two sites would have to serve, you know, a lower number at each site, given the amount of funding we have. We have roughly $3 million in grant funding. The continuum of care is expected to vote to authorize funding for this at their May meeting, so assuming that that occurs, I don't see why it wouldn't. All of these efforts are consistent with their strategic plan. We'd have those $3 million to spend on perhaps up to two short-term projects, but with a likely magic number of 60 persons, given that it's a little over a million dollars per year to operate that.
What location?
Roughly a million dollars to serve 60 individuals with adequate staffing, case management, et cetera. So if it's two sites, perhaps it's $400,000 for one and $600,000 for the other.
Got you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I have the same question that you asked about Pollock Pines, and the same calculations, because I was thinking that, and I'm thinking of the two motels up on Broadway, moving the ones, and I don't know what the rooms are, Dennis said a figure of 20, I don't know if that's 20 or not, but there, again, some of those rooms are already taken. And I'm just thinking, another presentation we had tonight was on the children, and how many are living in cars, and I do know from another organization that I belong to that we buy food and for the grammar school, and also clothing and stuff, so I know there's a lot of kids out there that are living in cars, and I would think that maybe they would be given a priority, I don't know, but this is what, you know, is being told to us tonight, that this is, you know, where they have to catch them while they're young and try to help them, you know. Anyway, it just doesn't sound to me like we're dealing with very many rooms for the need that's out there. And I realize what you're saying, you know, we have just so much money, but something was mentioned somewhere along the way about putting more than one person per room, is that allowed? Or is, do we go back to what you were just talking about, 60? I mean, that's the limit, you know, no matter if you double them in a room, or whatever. Is that what we're talking about?
So the 60 is, you know, an estimated number of persons, given a budget provided by Volunteers of America, so certainly there are going to be times when there might be a few more, a few less. The complexity of the case might require more significant support from workers. The board's direction really incorporated fire danger, so this program specifically is going to be targeting encampments. Now, if there's a child in an encampment that's living with their, you know, with their, an adult, that there's mother, father, whomever it is, they would be allowed to, you know, to stay with their parent in the situation. Ideally, though, we'd be, you know, one challenge that's going to come from this project is, again, intent to address fire danger encampments, and there's a need, as Councilmember Thomas mentioned, for discharge beds from the hospitals. The jail's going to, you know, be seeking re-entry beds for different groups, youth, folks in vehicles, there's all these needs, and there's never going to be a silver bullet for any one of those groups. So it's critical that we, as a community, as the COC and the county, look to develop a number of different programs to meet each need that's unique to each of those subpopulations. What I'll say is, the COC Strategic Planning Implementation Committee has already had at least one meeting, there's already discussions regarding safe parking programs, and interested community partners, faith-based groups, et cetera, that can establish those sites for folks in vehicles. This site, as it's been sort of directed by our board, is focused, again, on encampments, so we'll have to develop processes, procedures, to keep folks safe as they come into that program. And if we can develop, you know, services and programs to prevent and divert folks from coming into homelessness, now with that foundation laid, a huge impact in this community. There was a comment from a community member earlier that talked about law enforcement's hands being tied often, and that's exactly what this type of program addresses. Once there's a bed available for them, there's a set number of days that through outreach and engagement, law enforcement can engage with that encampment, and after that seven-day window of time, they can provide a 72-hour citation notice to that encampment in order to hopefully encourage them more to consider these program beds being available to them. So it really is a balance of giving law enforcement tools to assist them, no longer, you know, up to that capacity, up to the 60-bed capacity, would residents in that area continue to be impacted by an encampment? And also, it provides a service in the program that's very effective at getting folks out of their situation. So I think I answered your question and gave you a little bit more.
No, that's fine, but I, okay, so one of the big concerns, and what our request was to do this before, you know, fire, and specifically noted fire, and I heard that at the meeting, but I go back to the calculations that Dennis and I were talking about, and if the, what's available is pretty much already filled up with folks that are already in the program, it's not going to leave much room for the folks that are up on the hill that are starting all the fires. And I'm not saying those fires, I'm just saying in different encampments. Then, and that's, I think where, well, I know that's where I'm coming from, is that there's not enough beds to house these, all these folks that are starting fires, or potentially could start fires.
So let's, I'll speak theoretically at this point, since we don't have any real sort of projects yet, but let's assume that we have a site operating on, one of the hotels on Broadway, and let's assume we have a project operating on Perks Court with a congregate shelter. This will be a phased approach, so the Broadway lease could probably get negotiated in short order. We can get an agreement in place with the operator in fairly short order. We'd be targeting some point in June, and we're moving at lightning speed to make that happen. Once we have a lease negotiated, we have the provider available, now we can, you know, they'll hire the staff, we could have a project operating there by summer. If Room Key were to transition, if it were to transition to that location, we do have current resources supporting Room Key. So if those things, if the stars aligned and we have those pieces in place, knock on wood, we could potentially support an effective July 1st operation there, with our, with our resources currently on Room Key, keeping that afloat there, while Volunteers of America then hire staff, and they sort of phase in, and can, and sort of piece by piece start to populate that site. So that's an option. Now, the second phased approach would be the congregate location. I would expect all things, you know, assuming we're going to be doing site visits tomorrow with a project management firm that'll be tasked with developing the site. And so assuming things can move through fairly smoothly, we'd be hopeful that a project could be operating there by September. And so the board's direction was clear, you know, by fall of 2022. So it's possible in that short order, we could have two of those sort of phased projects come into play, and it certainly won't be enough to address every need. It'll be a piece of the solution within the funding that we have available.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. And again, as Dennis said, thank you for being here. I know you're wearing the tripartite coat hat of director, you know, also filling in as deputy director, as well as homeless outreach director, so much appreciated. The question on the funding, so we have the 2.5 approximate million in terms of, for purchase or lease of locations, the million dollar, or to run it, are those separate funds in terms of the actual programming and services?
Yes.
Okay.
The CDBG can be used for acquisitions of real property, or tenant improvements to those, cannot be used for that service provision?
Got you. Lease, are the CDBG funds, or can they be used for a lease?
I wish they could, it would give us more flexibility.
But they can't, okay, understood. So what we, so we could, and I think I just heard you say this, if you had a congregate location at Perks Court, you could still do non-congregate, I mean, depending on how the, because I know we only have a finite amount of folks we can serve, but that would be a potential solution, would be to have Broadway and then, say, maybe not Perks Court, but it could be those two things, correct?
Correct.
Something that would look that way.
Correct. And I'd also add, just for some more context, is assuming that we move forward with perks, we're putting money into setting up this site. While we could only operate at, let's just throw a number out there of 30, let's say, based on the funding, we could purchase a larger sprung structure. Why would we invest in all that process to purchase such a, you know, a small unit? Let's have something that we could grow into. We could have more office spaces in there, maybe we have some sections coordinated off for families, or places for folks with young ones. So it gives us time that as we, as we grow our grant funding, hopefully, as we get more investments, now we can increase capacity there over time.
And that's great, because that's actually, you anticipated my next question, because that's exactly what I wanted to ask, was if you do a congregate spot at perks, can you also build out for a medium, long-term there at the same time? So it sounds like we can, because we could scale up still, even if we aren't using all the, all the equipment or the room? Okay.
Absolutely. And the sprung structures that staff, you know, presented to the board have a 50-year warranty on them, so they can operate on a very long-term basis. The shorter-term sort of phrasing was simply speaking to that operating one at a time within our funding, but that could be a longer-term program.
Okay, thank you. In terms of, and I know this goes back from EDOC, and certainly feedback we've heard from the public, as well as service providers and others about, on the, essentially the location next to the sheriff's office, or the jail, excuse me, that folks wouldn't have liked it, it wouldn't have felt, I guess, welcoming, but can you, can you dig a little bit more into that? I'm just thinking, you know, God forbid I ever was homeless, the one place I would want to be would be sitting outside the door of the police department. I mean, I couldn't think of a more safer place for me to be than to be right next to law enforcement. I mean, that is where I would want to be. And I get it, that people have drug problems and other things, but, but that's, again, we've also heard that's not the majority, I think even, you know, this has been said to us from you as well. So to me, it just, you know, as much as I understand we had to go back and look at, reassess this, you know, money isn't just, it's not fungible, you can only use it if we're allowed to from different locations, but help me understand that a little bit better, because again, I feel like that's where I want to be if I'm, especially if I'm a woman, if I have children, I want to be right next to law enforcement. And so I don't know if you can provide any context there?
Sure, no, that's a great question. So the sort of elephant in the room that's been impacting this process is, of course, the Ninth Circuit Court ruling from Martin v. Boise in 2018. Some homeless residents within the city of Boise, Idaho, had sued the city for their enforcement of no camping ordinances, and the ruling sort of dictates that it's not a crime to be homeless. In order to enforce no camping ordinances, you must have a bed available for them. That's a key. And they use the word appropriate, having an appropriate bed available for them. If you communicate with service providers who are successful in getting folks out of homelessness, if you communicate with, and I communicated with peer counties that operate these programs, when I described the site, every one of them said that that's a bad idea, it's not a best practice, and it will be a barrier to folks coming into the program. Oftentimes, folks have trauma in their background who are facing homelessness, they perhaps have had negative experiences with law enforcement to some degree, they might not trust that, and so what we would risk is a project there being challenged by somebody. That's not to say that there would be a lawsuit, but that's not to say there wouldn't be. And somebody who could say, look, that's not an appropriate site, that's not an appropriate bed, that could have stalled this, it could have stopped us from moving forward at best, or added liability and a potential payout at worst. And I'm sure folks have reviewed the settlement from the Chico situation, and other settlements from other communities that have shown, you know, the high cost of these programs, and given that we're trying to frame our project within our grant funding, the last thing we would want is something to sort of be directed to us, or where we have to increase the number of beds or services that goes beyond our capacity with grants, then taps general fund, then impacts other areas and services in the county that the board's trying to balance the need for.
I appreciate that. It just, to me, it defies some logic, because again, I'll say, I mean, I don't think it's unreasonable, like I said, if I was homeless, I don't want to be right next, I mean, I couldn't think of a safer place to be if I had that opportunity. And I understand, you know, if I'm a drug user, or I'm doing something else that's illegal, I don't want to be there. And so, but, so I don't question, I understand that, and I don't want to jeopardize funds. You know, we have, you know, very few opportunities to get something done here, and it's been a long time coming, so I want to make sure that happens, but, you know, I was a believer in that, I think we all, we were here, we heard the sheriff last year, you know, give the presentation, and we knew there might be some tweaks to it, but it's certainly disappointing that that's the case, in that we would be sued, or potentially be sued, or someone bring something forward on that. Is a, you know, in my view, I would not want to see a three-year lease up on Broadway if that ultimately ends up being the location. I think two years, I'm hoping that's enough time to be able to get something stood up at Perks Court, you know, where I think, in my mind, is a good location. I've had, you know, issues with the Perrose Road location, because I know, and I know we have some individuals here tonight, you know, there's a huge community behind that location, that, you know, you don't necessarily see it in some of the photographs, but it's there, and I know there's issues already going on there, so it's always been a concern for me, in addition to the childcare center, that's across the road there. So I think there's some definite issues at that location as we go forward, and I, and I encourage the county to really work with us to, whatever's ultimately decided upon, if it's Perks Court, let's say, or wherever, and I know, and again, I want to give county staff the ability for flexibility too, because if you just pick something individually, well, that certainly strengthens the hand of whoever we're going to be negotiating. of whoever we're going to be negotiating with, because I know that's the only spot. So to the extent that we have some other options on the table, it's also because it strengthens Daniel's hand as he goes out and tries to get the best deal for the taxpayers. But, where was I going with this? I think, oh, I know, I was saying, I would just urge that wherever we do end up, that the Upper Room be a component of that. And I want to thank Supervisor Thomas for adding this into her motion, because the Upper Room does God's work. But it also means that we have a situation up on Broadway now that didn't exist before. So there's some interrelation between the encampments that we all see along Upper Broadway and having a sort of meal on demand at Upper Room. If we want to start getting serious about tackling that, we have to have that put together, I think, where Upper Room is going to be dedicated to the folks that we're serving, whether it's in a congregate or non-congregate environment. But I think, you know, once it's encapsulated, I think you're going to start, you will also start seeing, just by not having it there, some of that, I think, reducing, in addition to us hopefully then being able to enforce our non-camping laws along that location as well. And I would, just for my colleagues, you know, it may be, because we all know there's a finite amount of beds, that we may have to look at another spot. I know we designated some spots early on in this, but, you know, going back to 193 and the old refuse spot, I mean, I think we got to, we have to look at things realistically, because if we do have beds, but we can certainly also designate spots, it's something that I think proactively we may have to look at again as well too, but that's on a side note. So I think that's all my questions for now. So again, thank you, Daniel, I really appreciate it.
Sure.
Daniel, I've got just a couple follow-up questions. In regards to capacity, given that an emergency declaration has been made, it seems reasonable to put bunk beds in hotel rooms and fit more than one person per room. Is that realistic?
It could be.
Okay.
I would be working with folks who are, who are, have experience, deep experience working in this field. So that would be something that I'd be communicating with volunteers of America, to say, how could we maximize this space? Are we able to share rooms? Do you think that that would lead to more success? Could we, you know, could we have just a sampling of the rooms, that we start with that and test it and see, and then we can add to it, we can adjust things? So again, given the sort of balance of service provision, I think there's ways to explore that.
Okay. And then going back to the funding, so a million dollars for 60 people, so if we said, you know, if we decided that we needed capacity for 80 people in order for us to be able to enforce our camping ordinance, we would need to find additional funds at, you know, $17, 17,000 times 20 people additional?
Yes, at this point, yes.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all my questions for now. We're about to open this up to public comment. I do really want to thank you for being here. I know that you drove a long way to be here.
Sure.
And that you are working very hard in lots of different roles right now, which we appreciate, so.
Sure.
And thank you Supervisor Thomas as well for being here. We may have more questions after, after public comments, so.
That's good, thank you.
All right. At this time, I'd like to open it up to the public.
Kirk Smith. I think the thing we all agree on is this is great news when people in local government choose to not kick the can down any further. That's the good news. I do have some concerns about the process, starting off with the county first, with properties that are going to be in the city, and then you go to the city for a well-prepared plan. You've heard from people already that with the homeless population, you've got a higher incidence of child abuse, domestic violence, you have problems with drug use. So who's going to pay for those kinds of services? When it comes to the county's grant money that they've received, how much of it's going to go to our police department? How much to fire services for bringing emergency medical technicians to the site? People have heart attacks, drug overdoses, all those kind of things. One of the things that makes our police department so remarkable is not just the quality that it has, but that it's so small. At any given moment, you've got like about three cars, two or three cars on the road 24 hours a day for 10,000 people. So my guess is, the wheels are well-oiled, I can't imagine you not approving something tonight. I'm just asking that you come up with some safeguards to make sure that we're protected for those extra costs. At the very least, some way to monitor the number of police calls, ambulance calls, things like that. When you've got some squad car going off to three shelters, what happens to, needs to take place elsewhere? Those are the kind of things I'd ask you to look at and take care of. Also, I heard the business about it expires on June 30th. What we all have learned is the fire season is now 12 months a year, and some of the worst fires are after June 30th, always. So what happens when it ends? Who's going to pay the bill after June 30th, whenever that happens to be? Pocket, we saw with the Haven, the place we had up on Upper Broadway, that once it closed, that didn't mean that that population moved, it was still there. So when you close something on June 30th, whenever that year is, that doesn't mean the people are going to go to some brand-new facility, no matter how attractive it is out of Missouri Flat or Cameron Park or someplace else. So those are the kind of safeguards I'd ask you to look at, to make sure that we, the taxpayers, aren't stuck with some bills that nobody quite figured out at this early stage. Those are the questions I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
Hi, I'm Ron Marletta, I'm the Executive Director for Upper Room, I'm at Mayor Council and staff. I just want to thank you and thank the county for the meeting and for coming together to solve a situation, a challenge that we have here in our communities. I know as a nonprofit, we know we can't do everything ourself, we know we have to come together, and working with other local nonprofits, we are ready to do all we can and provide all we can in bringing resources from our side, as far as I know, other nonprofits as well. We can do this. We can, the best way not to, well, we can help them to really break that cycle, where there's not that resetivism that keeps going around, to help them with wraparound services, person-centered wraparound services that can do that. And there's the nonprofits, each of them that have these specialties that they can do, working together, we can get things done. And so on behalf of the board, I'm here to let you know that we're ready to move, well, wait a minute, let me say that. Well, I mean move, help and jump in the pie with everybody. I'm not, I don't have authority to say that. But to look at creative and innovative ways to do what needs to be done. And it's not just feeding and housing, those are the basic necessities of life, is food and shelter. But there's much more that we have to bring to this, if we're going to see individuals to get back into the community, tax-paying, working individuals with affordable housing, which is really the end result, and seeing them not come back to the streets, not come back to their addictions, their compulsive behaviors that put them there in the first place. And so those different areas and focusing on more of a holistic model as we move forward, I would just encourage us to continue to do that. The immediate need, of course, is shelter before fire season, of course, we've got to get them out of the camps. We have relations, we know the individual by name, so we've got reports, so we're willing to utilize that to do what we need to do, to help the city, help the county, help other, we've got Housing Eldorado that's here tonight as well, we work together, and so we're ready to do it. And there's a lot of nonprofits that are ready, and so we're very excited of the movement that we're seeing to get this done. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Peg Vanderkorn, Placerville, and a longtime Placerville. I wanted to say just a few things, mostly based on what I'm hearing tonight, but also having sat through the entire Board of Supervisors meeting and have the maps with me. And I come from experience with the current shelter. We are thankfully, not thankfully ending, maybe some of us, but having been on Main Street, just down the street, for four months with, I think, hardly any impact on the city, not police calls, I don't know of one, maybe there's been one, the sheriff, the police chief can tell us, but only a couple of ambulance calls, and to the speaker who said those things will go up, those things are happening in the camps anyway, during the shelters that I've been part of, navigation, or sorry, nomadic shelter, even Hangtown Haven way back, and now Pathways, those calls have gone down. So a couple, a couple of points I wanted to make, and these are all in my humble or maybe not so humble opinion. Be cautious about mixing up apples and oranges. You speak of Pollock Pines, and what was cut down there stopped at Pollock Pines, that intention was a Home Key transitional housing with navigation services project, that's very different than what we're talking about now, and it's very different than what we have going on now in Pollock Pines. And yes, somebody mentioned that it was not even known it was there for a year, I need to speak more quickly. The idea of short-term, both congregate and non-congregate housing, I think is a really attractive one, if we can do those two parts, because some people will want to go to congregate or be willing to, and some people will not. We've seen that in Housing Eldorado's Pathways this year. At the churches, it was congregate, big open rooms, and in Main Street, it was little rooms with two or three people in them. Some people liked one more than others, but most people liked the non-congregate. So just be cautious about what you're mixing up. This is shelter with navigation services, with help getting other kinds of help. There's not enough money for everything we need, and we need a lot more than what's being proposed right now, but we need to get started on something. Cases can be multiple people in a unit, but we're talking about individual humans that need case services. If the Broadway could be done in non-congregate and Perks Court and congregate, seems to me that would be very helpful, at least getting started on the short term. And I think those are the points I wanted to make. Good timing, huh? Thank you.
Thank you, Peg.
And thanks, oh, one more thing. I know I'm over, but thank you for the extremely hard work, for Daniel and the whole team, the city council, and city people and their team, all of the grace that's been shown this year for Housing Eldorado and running their shelter. Lots of grace here and lots of hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Taylor, Council, City Manager Cleve Morris, and staff. You've all done a lot of work with this, along with the county and the staff. It's phenomenal, phenomenal how this has come together. I'm Maureen Dion Perry from Housing Eldorado, and I do really want to sincerely thank you for your compassion in our work to improve the lives of homeless people, residents of our community as well as our community. You approved the building in Placerville, and I have seen the impact directly that this has had on people's lives. I had never worked directly with homeless folks before, so this was new for me. I had kind of been an administrator, so to speak. But this has truly been a pivotal experience in gaining insight into both the traumas, the difficulties, the challenges that our homeless folks face, while also seeing that we have had, in these short four months, only in the evening, we have had an impact on people's lives, that it really does work to give people shelter, food, safety, and provide them with the support. We have people who have gotten jobs, who are gainfully employed. We have those who were already gainfully employed and had no place to live, and we gave them a place to live. With the trust that we've built with people, we have seen people who have become willing to face their mental health concerns and substance abuse issues. That building of trust makes an incredible difference, and it takes some time. It's interesting that now with the great weather in the last week of the shelter, our numbers are up to like 17, 18 maximum that we could possibly hold in there, and that it's taken some time for the homeless community to build up the trust in what we're offering. And all of this took place on Main Street, and I bet if you asked people, very few people have even been aware that we've been there. And I think the same can be true for the hotels on Upper Broadway, that those will also be able to be discreet. It's, so, in closing, this is truly a collaborative work, city, county, as Ron said, nonprofits, and I think that this is the way we can get things done. We're here, and thank you for being part of this partnership with us.
Thank you, Maureen.
My name is Gary Martin. My mother would really get on me if I didn't take my hat off. I've been involved with the Pathways operation for the last four months, sitting around my house thinking, you know, something's got to be done. I was a driver. I'd go to the Upper Room and meet the folks out here, and I would get people and bring them back to the old DA's office. I think I got more out of it than they did. A couple of questions that came up while I heard talk, the 60 people thing, I'd like to address that, in my humble opinion, I think this might be somewhat of an answer. It's not just putting people in beds, it's the navigation center that we're trying to develop, in my mind, which will give people those wraparound services that when I drive people from the Upper Room to the old DA's office, that's all they talk about. They need those services. These are people in trouble, they need help. We are here to help them. We, you know, I talked about this with my teenage grandson the other day, and, you know, he's in history and he's learned about the moonshot and everything, and I said, you know, Jacob, we have an opportunity to go to the moon right here in the county of Eldorado with this project right here. There's a lot of fear behind it, there's a lot of questions, and I concur with the gentleman about, you know, what's going to happen with the police, what's going to happen with the emergency calls? They're already happening. And if the data that I've been reading is correct, they will lessen. Your Broadway improvement program will be more possible with a navigation center and the beds for these people. You know, when I was at the County Board of Supervisors meeting, I heard a lot of, you know, re-bop in the audience about, these people don't want help. These people are just drug addicts. If there's a drug problem in the trailer park, the chief has to address it. That's the law. These people want help. You know, I'm not here with a lot of data or statistics, and I wish I could be as articulate as Daniel, he is fantastic, you know, but these people need help. You have an opportunity, you're leaders of the community. I was on the Pioneer School Board for eight years, I know your position. But I had many opportunities to do things. 50% of the people didn't like me, 50% of the people loved me. You have an opportunity to do the right thing. So I'm asking to continue the cooperation with the county, help these people, they want the help, they need the help, it's right here. We got stopped last year, this year we can go forward. I beg that you make those choices. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville, and I have been concerned about our homeless population for a number of years, and very concerned about the possibility of burning down the whole town and having those people go up in flames along with it. I am really happy to see we're go up in flames along with it. I am really happy to see we're finally making some progress and finally working together with the county and doing something, and I think that using the building down here on Main Street for the last several months has been a wonderful thing to do, and I'm really proud of the city for doing that. I think Perraz Road and the old Mason Lodge would make an excellent center. It's already a building. It already has infrastructure. It has, it's large enough to actually be useful. Perks Court, to my knowledge, has no infrastructure and nothing there, so you would be starting from scratch now. And the other thing is you've got 60, 60 people possible with this grant, and if you look at 24 beds, or 21 beds in one of the, one of the motels, and 34 beds in the other bed, in the other motel, that come, if I can still add, that still only makes 56, so we're, we only have, we're still four beds short, even if we took both of those hotels, and it seems to me like taking both of them would be a very good idea. They're next door to each other, and then you've got people in a fairly congregated space, and to my knowledge, those motels don't see much use anyway, so this would probably actually be better than what they are now. So those are, are my things, but I'm, I want us to keep working on this because I don't believe the point count was only 60 people. When they did the point count, I think it was over 200 homeless people. And so, and it seems to me like we had almost 60 grade school children who were without shelter. So, and as Councilmember Thomas was talking about, we've got people in cars, and Councilmember Borelli, I guess it was, talking about all the children in cars, trying to go to school out of a car. So we have a pretty good-sized problem that we need to solve here, but this is at least a start, which is better than it's been for several years. So let's keep going.
Thank you, Sue.
Jane McGinnis. First of all, I'm just so thrilled that we are doing something, okay? So this is simply opinion after I was looking at the motion and trying to think of all these moving pieces. With the two motels, you have a total of 55 beds, so we have 21 and 34. I think it is reasonable to say that the Project Room Key people are going to end up there. I think it would be silly not to assume that. We're not going to just take 24, 25, however many it is right now, high-risk people, and say, well, your time's up. Now we're going to do it for other people. They're going to take those beds. So we're talking about approximately 25 new beds if we go after the two motels. That's way too much money with a very limited long-term potential. The cost per bed is just not going to pencil out reasonably, and frankly, Upper Broadway has paid its dues for years and years. I understand the idea that it'll be easier to move people from the hill to those two motels across the street, but I think there's a lot of people out there who are desperate for housing and will be happy to go where there is some, a place for them. And in the last year and a half, especially with COVID and the restrictions and the problems that people have had, the population on the hill has more than doubled. Where there used to be 30 people, there's now upward of 60. That's more than the beds we have, and that's only one encampment. So all I'm saying is I think we should look at Drew Road as one short-term site with a sprung building that could house maybe 20, 30 people, if it's large enough. The services are right there. The HSA services are right there. And then focus on Perks Court, because it can be both a long-term and a short-term. There are, the way it's laid out, there's room for three little camplets. We could do three sprung buildings there, starting with one. You could have men in one. You could have one in the middle area there for women, and you could have a third one for families with children. That gives them a certain amount of safety and security. But it could start as a short-term, and it could go into the long-term. And then if we're talking about leases, let's be negotiating for the Cold Springs Road property, because yes, it is all built out. There may be some issues with the foundation, but it has a lower and an upper parking lot. There's room there for at least four, maybe five, trailers in the upper parking lot that could serve for classrooms, for navigation centers, for office staff, to give that entire two floors on Cold Springs Road to beds, which would be a lot more than 60. So over time, yeah, we're going to have to spend more than we've got right now. Let me be the first tonight to say the county has a contingency budget. We're sitting on $50 million. We don't need to leave people on the street. We can't house 600.
Jane, please wrap up your comments.
We can house a lot more than 60 if we go to Perks Court.
Thank you.
And let Broadway have a rest.
Good evening, council and staff. My name is Charlie McDonald. I'm the program director for the Pathways Winter Shelter. I wasn't going to say anything because between Ron and Maureen and everybody else, I pretty much covered all the, all the details about the shelter. Maureen reminded me that I needed to say something, so I want to thank you for giving us a place to operate from. I think it was very successful, and I think we made some differences in some lives, but we have been doubling up. We have 10 rooms down there. We've been doubling up all season with two people and sometimes three in a room, and it has worked out successfully with one or two incidents where we had to switch rooms, people from rooms, so they would get along. But doubling up does work if it's under, under the right control, so thanks for the, thanks for the support, and that's all I got.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, city council, staff members. My name is Mickey Kaiserman. Homelessness is a problem that requires a comprehensive approach. Housing, food, mental health, addiction rehab, education, job, job training. It sounds like we have such a multifaceted problem here, trying, trying to move different parts around, but really what drives it all is the financing, and what financing is available, and how do we solve this long-term? And I hate short-term delusions because Upper, Upper Broadway is really dear to me because I was on a SECAR committee, and we worked on trying to revitalize it, and in fact, Wendy sat on that with me and with Pierre and Cleve, and I think with John Clarici as well. And we met with the upper room, and we know that the homeless camp only exists because there's food given out there by the upper room. That's why that, that's why that encampment exists. So, and we talked to them, and they said, and they've said it again, I guess, to everyone else, that they're willing to move that once we have some permanent facilities. So I think we need, I'm not sure what the answer is because I don't see all the numbers, but if we're just moving pieces around, I hate to see Broadway changed because we're going to have the Mackinaw Hotel go in there, which is a really big project. We're also going to have the Carriage House with the Food for Lesses. That shopping center is in the process of being revitalized, which will bring sales tax dollars in. So I think we need a more long-term solution as to how we do it. I'm not sure if, I don't know the numbers, but maybe a tent city at Perco Court with facilities would solve the problem. I'm not, I'm not sure. I think in Chico, they put up tents at the airport, and people moved out there. I've seen so many different solutions. I don't know if they work, but I think we need a more comprehensive solution than just trying to fill gaps here and moving the pieces around. So I hope we had, have, I haven't seen it, but I'd like to see the financials beside this, that pays for these costs, and what is, gives us the biggest bang for our buck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council and mayor. Jonathan Gainesborough. It is quite an immense, not step, but voyage to get to this point. I listened today on my phone. I have the recording from the ACLU in San Francisco. I have the recording of the NPR saying they called the city, they called the county. Neither would return the calls. What's going on? This was two and a half years ago. We've made a lot of, lot of progress, and I salute you all for the progress. I love the idea, Councilman Saragosa, of the women and children utilizing some, someday of the safety of the sheriff's property. Excellent. It's a brilliant idea. Safe parking, we've got to, we've got to focus on that. Now, I brought Martin Boise to here to where it's every day like cornflakes for all of us, like two and a half years ago, and we avoided the negative leg, litigational side of that. But Martin Boise does not eliminate congregate housing, I don't believe. Daniel, you could correct me on that, but if bunk, if bunk beds can be used, we've got more than 60 beds to handle, whether it's Upper Broadway. If we go elsewhere, the sprung structures are apparently with the 50-year lifespan. They can be moved eventually, as it was said at the five, we were there five, six hours at the county supervisors' meeting. Letting the Nomadic Shelter run this year was a message to the whole county of your humanity, and I salute you all on that, and Cleve, and all five of you council for doing that and extending it for a month. We're in motion. Let's not stop the motion. Nothing will be perfect. Nothing will please everybody. God's perfect son, Jesus Christ, couldn't please everyone, and he still doesn't, but he invites everyone to heaven because he died for the sins of all of us, especially a sinner like me. So in my time remaining, I just want to say that VOA, for a million dollars a year, there's 11 employees, but whether they're going to bunk bed or live someplace, I'd like to see Charlie and Housing Eldorado involved, and Volunteers of America being more supervisory. I don't think we need 11 staff in that regard to, to see this Navigation Center. It is going to work, and you're the key to help launch it. God bless you all. Thank you for doing the right thing.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Good evening again, Kathy Lishman. I wanted to ask you if the City of Placerville, Eldorado County Joint Policy Statement on Homelessness has already been signed, or if it's here tonight for approval, because I was just going to mention that on the city's logo, it has one that has a news on it, so that was the first comment, and that shouldn't be on there. A lot of thought has gone into this, and I did not go to the six-hour Board of Supervisors meeting on this, so I don't know all the details, but I do have some questions. And the homeless count in Placerville being 60, and then the ones coming from Pollock Pines, and so if you have this, what happens when there aren't enough beds? Are you able to enforce anti-camping ordinances or not because you still don't have room for all the people that need it? And I know you're trying to fix the problem on Broadway, and remember about other areas like Quartz Mountain, too. Does that mean that that will still continue as is? I love the holistic approach and the services, and without those, the project wouldn't be as good as it can be. So thanks very much for everybody, the county, the city, everybody that's helped bring it to this.
Thank you, Kathy.
I just thought I should offer just a few comments on the intent of the motion. This is such a, a big step for us, so I'd like just to say, you know, we all recognize there will never be a perfect solution. We've been dealing with this issue for a while, and. Okay, no problem. For the past, you know, 10 years, when I was on the city council, we were dealing with this issue, and for all those years, it's been the nonprofits, the faith community, the advocates that have carried the water on this issue. And, you know, you've asked us over the last couple of years to come to the table, and rightly so. The county has Health and Human Services. You don't, and we're here now. We've, and we've, we look forward to working with you cooperatively as we move forward on this very fluid issue. The, the place is always a challenge, you know, and ideally, we would have, and there's been talked about, different solutions in, in all five districts of our vast county, and I agree with that philosophy. That would be ideal. That said, we also have to be realistic. We are limited by our resources. We are limited by time and the direction, the strong direction that the city and the county have said to address the fire danger this year, and we are also limited at this time by political will. I have to tell you, if we want something done, that is not going to happen if we insist on something in every, in all the five districts, and that is a reality of what we're dealing with. I have built flexibility into my motion to address the impacts and the challenges that have been articulated today, sharing a short-term project between the county and the city site, recognizing that it's a city site that could be stood up quickly to address fire danger. If Broadway is selected as the short-term non-congregate site, I have built into my motion, and it was approved by my board, that we will look, look, that the county will work with the city to secure additional police resources, recognizing that you may need them to help with even the transition from the encampments into any short-term, not, short-term site, because it will be the police department working with Volunteers of America to go out and, and meet those folks and offer the new services that we have. So that will be a drain on our police resources, and my motion recognizes that and builds that into it. I've also, in my motion, gave direction for our county to coordinate with the city, exploring the feasibility of Perraz Road, recognizing that that is in your jurisdiction, so working cooperatively with you on that. And I think it's so important to recognize that we haven't been here before. Yes, we've tried different things. We had Hangtown Haven. That was, you know, appropriate for the, for the moment, certainly had some tremendous benefits, and it had some challenges. This is not Hangtown Haven. That's important to recognize. This will be a professionally managed 24/7 program, and Daniel can speak more later if you have questions, of the differences between a Navigation Center with wraparound services and, you know, just shelter. Also, by having this, it will allow us to enforce our no camping policy, which will strongly help encourage folks to move out of a situation that is not fit for human consumption, and move into the programs to get them help to move out of homelessness. We have never been here before, and we are at the point of decision. And from my mind, we can either do nothing and continue to have what we have on Broadway, or we can act boldly and pivot if necessary. You know I have a heart for Placerville. You know I understand the impacts to Broadway, and my motion fully recognized that. Will it work? I don't know, but we've got to try something because what we have is not working now. And just know that I am committed at the County Board of Supervisors to working strongly with you to make this as successful as possible within the bounds of our resources and with strong coordination between our two entities. So thank you for the discussion tonight.
Thank you.
All right. We are closing public comment. We're going to bring it back to the board.
We're going to bring it back to the board for discussion. Who wants to kick it off?
I'll start that, party.
Okay.
I have a lot of comments you're not going to like at first, but at the end, you know, I do want to move forward, and I have a lot of suggestions. I've been frustrated with the term "we're partners" when it hasn't felt like we're being consulted as a partner. I asked our city manager, "Were you consulted about the criteria of the camp sites, you know, the places going forward?" And he said, "No." I said, "Do you know what the criteria was?" He said, "No." That doesn't feel like a partner to me, and that's really frustrating. I want to point out that you've noticed that the city population of homeless has doubled. And there's a reason for that that we need to talk about that hasn't been talked about because it has a lot to do with our partnership with the county and the Sheriff's Department. I've gone around where I've known that there are a lot of campsites, and they're gone out of the county. You know, they're the private ones, the public ones, they've been cleaned up, and they've been pushed into the city. And there are a few things that didn't add up to me, and I had a call to the chief the other day and confirmed some of the things. The Sheriff's Department is dropping them in the city. At the upper room, at the, you know, they're displacing people out of the county into the city. And our police department has stepped back from the hot team, from some of those activities. And when the Sheriff's Department does that, it sends a loud message to the community that Placerville's where you got to go. And that is not fair to us. We were not a partner in that decision, and these are the things that really frustrate me and are not fair to Placerville. Another thing that I'm listening, that there's no money to do this, there's no money to do that, I'd like to point out that we, as a council, set aside 10% of our ERPA funds, realizing that this was an issue. I didn't see the county do that, and it's frustrating when the county says, you know, "We're partners, we're moving forward," but we don't seem to have the same level of commitment moving forward. It doesn't make any sense to me to move the people from Pollock Pines to Broadway for two or three or four months to move them to another location. You know, it seems to me that the county needs to go back and look at the crisis that they created, right? The county, before the strategic plan came out, before this came forward, before they had a plan, what they were going to do with those people, decided to, "We're not moving forward with Pollock Pines." Well, a county needs to be a partner in solving their own problems, you know? And if we're going to have something by this fall, the county should renegotiate with the Best Western and figure out how they can keep those people there, instead of trying to make that problem the city of Placerville's. The county has not designated a place where people are allowed to camp. The city has, and that is a problem because everything gets pushed into the city. It wasn't our problem to start with, but it's getting pushed into the city because the county is not living up to their part. They're saying, "No, you can't do it in the county." That's not fair to the city. You know, the county needs to designate their spot where they're going to allow that camping until we can get all the shelters done. It's not really going to help us if the county and the sheriff keeps pushing them into the city. And so those are things that, okay, I'm frustrated, but those need to be solved, and they need to be part of this conversation and considered moving forward. Okay. I'll move on to the locations now. I have comments for each location. And I need my glasses because I'm getting older. As far as the hotels on Broadway, I don't think this is an appropriate location for a few reasons. These are working businesses, and once you stop those from working, those have long-term impacts. As we all travel, and we know, we have our favorite places to stay as we go. And so when you take those off the market, then that's the word, "Oh, those aren't open anymore," and people find new places. And I'm just not, I don't think it's a good idea for us to take a working business when the county could renegotiate with the Best Western up in Pollock Pines. That's not fair to us. We don't need to decommission another business in Placerville. It's right next to a school. We've talked today about the children, and I know that everyone, not everyone, it's been said that the homeless are most vulnerable. I don't believe our homeless are most vulnerable. I believe our children are most vulnerable. And I don't believe locations right next to a school and right next to a daycare are an appropriate location for that. And I agree with the previous comments that it's too much to ask of Broadway. Broadway has had 13 years of this. It is not fair to ask them to go another two or three years. Regarding Perros Road, it's right next to a daycare center. It has poor pedestrian connections. It has a community right behind it. It's not a great location. Everything everybody's talked about up to this point is what's best for the homeless, but they haven't talked about what's best for our entire community and everything around it. Where did my, I skipped my next page of locations. Brew Road, if we had to have a second temporary location, that would be my choice. Brew Road and Perks Court. You know, there is a neighborhood behind it, you know, if we could put limits on that short term. Next to the jail, we've kind of thrown that out. I don't even think that's worth talking about. But I do want to talk about why Perks location is the ideal location. County already owns the property. You don't have to go through some great negotiations, you know, the county has to do a land transfer, whatever. Okay. It's across from where the new health center's going in. It's almost two acres. We could put more than one sprung structure on almost two acres. You can put the upper room up there. When you talk about the people on Broadway needing to be familiar, well, if you relocate the upper room, that gives those people the familiarity that they're looking for to move to the next step. I mean, you have three different properties. I think one's a little over an acre, one's a quarter acre, one's a half acre. There's a lot to work with there. When you're thinking long-term, there is a lot of potential to work there. I know I heard that the water and sewer connections aren't the best. Well, you know what? Maybe the county's going to have to shovel out a little money and make it work. Because it has good pedestrian infrastructure for getting everywhere they need to go. It's at a dead-end road, so it's going to have the least impact on the entire community around it. And that's most of my points. All right. I'll let someone else talk. Sorry.
Jackie, thank you for making those points and advocating for Placerville and talking about some things that had not been brought up before because those are really important things that should be part of the conversation and is, you know, all the reason why, as we move forward, the city really needs to be an active partner in discussions with how the program works and not just about the site, but about, you know, more broadly, solutions that could be quickly solved, you know, with just a little bit of changes to protocols and have a big impact as well. So thank you. Thank you for bringing those up. Any other comments?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with everything Jackie just said. In terms of, I mean, again, because I think what we're looking, what we're doing here is trying to get some direction to staff as we move forward in terms of where we go next, how the city, what type of a partner the city is in this process. I think that's a major point, both from what hasn't happened in the past to where we go going forward. Because that's, at this point, that's all we can do is go forward, right? And hopefully fix some of the issues that weren't addressed in the past. And so if we're doing that, I just have, I mean, there's a couple of things that I, I think I said earlier, but I want to kind of restate them, and that is, if, for whatever reason, Upper Broadway ends up being a location, to me, it can't be more than two years, and it has to be a lease. I mean, I think if the county goes to any type of proposal to purchase properties on Broadway, I would vigorously oppose that up until, I mean, if my colleagues agreed legal action on that under, you know, we can look at what that might look like, but that can't be the long-term solution on Broadway. As Jackie said, you know, it's been 13 years from, it's just that, that area has suffered. Let's just put it that way. And we do have, we have the hotel coming in. We have, hopefully, some really cool things happening at the Grocery Outlet Center, and we've talked about reimagining Broadway as it is, just to maybe be, do mixed use, do more walkable, livable areas. And so all those things together, it's just not a great site for a long-term plan. I get a short-term plan potentially, and I think that has to be ironclad, that it's only a short-term solution, not a long-term one. And that, and for me, you know, Perros, for a reason that I hadn't thought of before, but something that Jackie just said, which is, how are we going to move people, like, if we're talking about folks that are in Pollock Pines right now, we're going to move them, they're going to move them to Broadway, then we're going to move them over to Perks Court or wherever? I mean, assuming that that might be the way things work, that doesn't make a lot of sense. And so I, and I think, and again, you know, Broadway's, it's a residential, I mean, it's commercial, but we have a lot of residential in that area. Going to Perros is kind of the same thing. I just feel like we're dropping a homeless navigation center in the middle of a residential area. We have a huge community behind there. We have the childcare center across. That could change, but that, the community that lives there isn't going anywhere. There are a lot of people that live there, and that's not going to change. And it's, I think, a representative stated here, there's already some ongoing homeless problems with, and some other issues that are happening in their area. And so I don't want to exacerbate that. I think, you know, we're going to eventually end up doing some work along Placerville Drive in terms of making that, you know, fixing the bridge, a couple of things in that area, but it's not a walkable area. We're many years away from that being what I would call pedestrian-friendly along Placerville Drive. So again, it's just, it doesn't look to me to be a great location for something, even though the site itself has a kitchen and has space, it doesn't take into account the environment that I think goes around it. I think Supervisor Thomas is absolutely correct. We got to have, you know, additional law enforcement resources. If we're going to do something in the city of Placerville, there's going to be an impact. And I think that has to be part of the discussion with the county as we move forward. I think, like a lot of folks have said, I think Perks Court is a really good location. It's centrally located. It's going to be close to the Community Health Center. It's close to job corridors, as well as the trail to get back into the city of Placerville and into other resources that are located within the city and in the county complex. So I think it's a really good location. There's less, there's not a lot of residents around that location as well. There's a few, for sure, and they will be impacted. I'm not going to mitigate that, but it's certainly a lot less than any of the other locations that have been brought up. I would love, I mean, Brew and even the Sheriff's, you know, locations I think are great in my mind, but it doesn't sound like those are really going to happen, although I wouldn't mind looking at the Brew location again as well. I just think, you know, going forward, anything we do, I mean, if it involves, I would be reluctant for anything to be a purchase at this time because we just don't have enough data. I'd rather see how things are going to work out before we go forward with a purchase of a location, especially if it's going to be in the city of Placerville. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Well, I have to agree with Jackie on many points that she brought out, and I, you know, I'm still having a real hard time with us talking about the homeless because it sounds like to me that, we keep talking about the folks that are up there in Pollock Pines, and when, it's, to me, it's, we provided them with housing, and they're not ever going to leave. So this is where I'm having a problem. You talk about the navigable centers that, you know, this will be, but if we, if we move just a certain few into the beds and they never leave, what are we going to do with all those other people that are out there? And there's many. Kathy brought up, and this is just right across the hill from me, we've got a huge population of homeless up there in Quartz Mountain, up by our wonderful gold bug mines. And I'm telling you, it's not pleasant because there's people up there, there's one person that screams all night, and we're all in the neighborhood listening to this. And, you know, and I'm going, okay, so if we only have just a few beds, and I'm saying "few," 60, whatever, we're moving, if this continues with Pollock Pines, I still come to that same conclusion, we've only got a few beds, and we've got a huge homeless population. And you talk about the fire danger, and I agree, again, with what Kathy said, what do we do? We don't have enough beds for those folks, so is Quartz Mountain's going to still stay there? That's a huge fire danger area. And again, and I know you folks have said that when you bring, when, from the county, that this, whoever, I can't remember their names, that are going to run this. I'm sorry, I've forgotten the name.
Volunteers.
Volunteer, yeah. And, but how are they going to work with these folks if they're up in a camp on Quartz Mountain? You know, this is where I, I'm terribly confused, I guess, by this whole, what's being presented to us. Again, I have to agree. God, you know, I've been on this council longer than anybody, and I just feel so sorry for those folks up on Broadway, and I just do not want to inflict one more situation for them. I admittedly, and I've said it, I have a business down on Placerville Drive. I don't want to see it transferred down there and all that they've had to, is it going to be the same? I'm really against the Masonic Lodge being even considered as a site. I just think it's the wrong place. It's very, I know, I think it was, Maureen talked about the folks not being exposed to, and, I mean, you couldn't ask for more exposure than the Masonic Lodge. And I don't think it's a, the road situation up there, the daycare, the trailer park that's there, I just don't think it's an adequate place. I, too, have to agree with our city manager when he proposed Perks Court, and I, if we're going to have it any place, I would like to see a start down there and maybe put in some temporary things that could be done. I know that there's a lot that we could bring in. I know that the sewer situation and water and stuff, but that can all be, there can be short-term remedies for that, so. And maybe you can answer my questions, some of the things I brought up, but I just, like I say, those are just some of my concerns, and I, I just, I really want to get away from Broadway. And I just can't believe that in this large area, that our little six square miles, or not square miles, but our six miles of radius in Placerville is the only place that they can find to put this homeless situation. I'm sorry. I just can't believe it, and I won't.
I'd like to second that because I believe that Placerville should share the load, but we shouldn't carry the load. I think that, I find your comments, Jackie, very interesting about the Sheriff's Department, and, kind of have to take your word on it right now?
The chief of police is there.
Yeah, I would kind of like to take your word on it right now, but I would also like to ask the sheriff, is this a policy he has, whether it's written or unwritten, in the county, that this is what they're doing? I think the Board of Supervisors should ask the sheriff what his policy is on that and why this is happening. I think, I think, I think it's a very reasonable expectation for the people of this county to understand how he is operating his organization and whether he is, you know, moving people into the city or not. It's a legitimate question. It's, you know, and I would expect an honest answer from him. He's an honest guy. He's a stand-up guy, and, you know, I'd like to know what his thoughts are on that. So I would appreciate that. If that truly is the case, you know, I think part of his budget should go towards supporting the homeless here in the city. Seems like he's eliminated his expenses on his side. Maybe some of that should come our way. You know, we're, literally, we are six square miles out of 190,000 square miles, and that also includes the Lake Tahoe area. And so I, you know, I don't have all the numbers of the West Slope, but let's just say 150,000 square miles. And so I, you know, I don't have all the numbers of the west slope, but, uh, let's just say 150,000 square miles. Um, we are 7% of the population of the county right here in this little town. And yet, we are being asked to take over all of the homeless, almost all of the homeless. And even, let's, let's just be honest, if you look at Perks Court, it is still right on the border of the city. It's, it's one walk, it's a half a mile walk into the city limits. And, and it's disappointing that the county and the board of supervisors could not come up with a better solution than, you know, and I agree with the idea that, you know, we haven't been partners in this. And I, and don't get me wrong, I appreciate all of the effort and work that the county's putting in. And they, believe me, I, I'm well aware of the political challenges that the county has. Because every, every one of them, except for our supervisor, has been, has been basically saying, well, and, and here we are, listen, listen to us. We have figured out that there's no place in this town that we can put a, we can put a homeless shelter either. Can't put it on Perrose, we can't put it on Broadway, we can't put it on Placerville Drive. That's pretty much our town. We can't put it, um, where else can't we put it? I mean, we figured out all the places that, that we can't put them and where they're at isn't good either. And we can't put them on Lower Main because it's going to, businesses down there. And so at some point, the county and the city have to come together, share the load, find these, find solutions that work for both of us. And it's going to be in a neighborhood that somebody doesn't like. And it's always going to happen. That, that does, that does not exist, that homeless solutions go into places where people don't object to it. And, 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 and so, you know, and we've been circling, and this is, this is, this, we've been circling this and this is why we're here. For such a long time, the county didn't even disclose the locations they have because it is a political hot potato. As soon as, as soon as they disclose it, every neighborhood that those are in, it blows up. They don't want to do it. And, and I get it. Imagine if it was in my, my neighborhood, I'd have challenges with it too. We'd have to look at it. I know that in our neighborhood, 13, 14, I don't know how many years ago, Cottonwood was built. And we thought, there goes the neighborhood. And it's, yeah, and you're right. And it's, and there's a lot, and it hasn't gone that way. There's a lot of, there's a lot of, um, examples of, of homeless going in and, and they're being successful and being low impact on cities. And, and even the idea of Upper Broadway, it is probably the best-case scenario for the city to have it on Upper Broadway as a, as a non-congregate living. Because it's really one of the lowest-impact ways that you can, um, house some of the, on, some of the homeless that are the highest vulnerable. And, and it's, and it's a meaningful way to make a difference for, for that community. And, you know, I can go down the sites and tell you every reason why, and they're, every one of them is legitimate. But at the end of the day, if we're going to partner with them, we also have to, we also have to, we all have to dig down and find, find a solution. Um, and that includes, you know, making difficult decisions that our community may not like in some areas. And doggone it, I, I even hate saying that because it's true. Um, you know, the hill up there on Upper Broadway, it has approximately 50 residents. Am I, am I, is that, uh, chief? Is that about right? 50 residents, give or take, on a given day? I mean, that's one encampment, if we were to clear out, would fill up the, the sprung tent. The sprung structure, system. That's it. And so we're still left with every other county, whether it's Quartz Hill, whether it's down by the creek, whether it's, you know, you could, we can go around the town and find it all. So this is not, I, I want to be clear, this is not a great solution. If we take up the, you know, if we take up one or two of those places up on Broadway, the city's losing money from TOT taxes, a chunk of change. And, and so we're going to take a loss on top of our expenses involved with that. It's, it's a reality of the situation. I have really appreciate the fact that you did the math and figured out how much we put in and how much the county put in in terms of ARPA funds. And that's a real eye-opener. Not only are we suffering, dealing with the impact of homeless on our police force and all the things we're doing here, we're also proportionally way overfunding it compared to the county. Now, the county has opportunities. They have it, this is all a negotiation and discussion. This is not the end of the road, but I consider this the beginning of the road in terms of getting involved with this, with this solutions that they have come up. The COC has came up with their, uh, strategic plan. This is part of it. This, this, if you look at their strategic plan, this is, this is pieces of it. If you look at all this funding, this came from COC. A huge portion of it came from COC and it's part of their strategic plan that's going to help fund this. So, all of that is in here as well. Um, it is a multi-phase approach. You can't get away from that. We can't do it all at the beginning. What else do I have here? You know, I do feel like the city keeps giving up ground. You know, the sheriff pushes it over, here we go, okay, what do we do, you know? But, you know, maybe we need to have an honest conversation with the sheriff department about what they're doing. I, I don't think that's unreasonable. He is an elected official too. And there's another elected official apparently coming in behind him that, that seems to be very staunch on ideas with homelessness. And I would like to understand what his position is. I think that's a very reasonable request. I don't want to be the party of not in our backyard, but I, but I do also want to make sure that we're, that we are sharing the load with the county and that the county understands that they have a, they, they need to participate in the, in the process of finding solutions, not only just the solutions, but the, the places to put them. I just have one question. How many people, you know, because they, we always talk about the static number of 20 people in Pollock Pines. But my understanding is there was quite a few that went through that process in Pollock Pines that were moved out of homelessness. And if you could share that information, I think that'd be valuable information because it's not a static number. You just don't park them there, they stay there. I think there was a lot of successes that came out of Pollock Pines as well in terms of opportunities for people to move out of homelessness. Once they get established and, and have a residence and, and have that security, they can do some of those other functions that otherwise you couldn't do when you're homeless. If you could answer that question when you're, when that comes up, I'm, that's it for me now. Thank you, everybody. Because I know everybody up here has their heart in it and we need to work, we need to partner with them to find a solution.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just also add that, I mean, because as I think my colleagues have said, we really are trying to, to do our part here. Um, and I'll just add one more thing that we've done is, you know, we've, uh, green-lighted up to, you know, somewhere in the, in the realm of about 250 affordable housing units that will come into Placerville, hopefully in the next couple of years, uh, that, you know, are obviously not all going to be so that we can then move homeless into long-term housing solutions. But I think there's going to be some opportunities there certainly to have those. And so again, you know, the, the city, and, you know, when those come online, when they get closer, we're going to have people pushing back on those as well when they, when they pop up. I, I, I mean, that's just going to be the case, but, you know, we've made that commitment to move forward on those. And again, it's, it's that, and that's a, a longer-term commitment so that we do have places for people to move into. Because that's sort of, you know, it's a critical missing piece right now. Uh, and so I would also encourage the county to try to get some of these located within county, uh, properties as well. There's certainly a lot of land within, uh, Eldorado County that hopefully we could, you know, prop up some more of these type units as well. Uh, and I know there's some things out there as well, so I'm not going to say there's no, nothing going on. But I think ours has moved quite, you know, ours are pretty real. Uh, it's just a matter of, you know, hopefully that those tax credits coming, uh, through as well. And so, I, and I wanted to put that out, that marker out, out there as well, you know, as, as we move forward. Um, and I know, you know, the mayor wants to make her comments as well. Um, I also wanted just to think about how we want to kind of frame this out from us to give, um, Cleve and staff, um, you know, where, where we go next with this. So if we all start thinking about how we want to formulate that, uh, going forward.
Michael, could I ask you, you a question?
Sure.
You're talking about the, what the approved housing that we, those are not going to be really affordable for homeless people.
Correct.
Right? Is that correct? I mean, I don't, I don't want the people to get the impression that we're...
Yeah, I mean, it would probably take, uh, grant dollars and some other funding sources to be able to get some people into those. But I could foresee like maybe 10 units or something that would be...
Set asides.
Set asides, you know, to have some of that, uh, movement forward. Because I think it would make sense to, to be able to do that, yeah.
All right. Oh, I've got a couple of comments. I do want to echo the comments made about the Broadway location. I understand that it may be the quickest to set up. And I also understand that the property owner is, um, enthusiastic about moving forward with this. So, which, you know, it is hard to find and I recognize that. I do agree that Broadway has already been really impacted and we have been working as a city very hard to revitalize that area. And that closing a hotel that is in operation will be a loss of, of TOT taxes for the city, which we rely on in our budget. I also agree that Perks Court is a great location. And it seems like, you know, setting something up in one place and then moving it, um, there's a lot of redundancy and, and loss of efficiency and extra labor involved in that. And it may be worth spending just a little bit more time looking at the feasibility of moving forward with Perks Court just first and final, you know, and setting up the sprung shelters, which my understanding is that you can add on to them. You could fit several there. You could also put one structure there and then have designated camping space. So I, I would really like the county and our staff to pursue that a little bit more before, um, settling on the Broadway locations. However, you know, wherever it is, but especially if it's on Broadway, there's a couple of things that I, we really like our staff to advocate for. And that is making sure that there's sufficient capacity and that those in our encampments are prioritized. I'm very concerned about this 60-person threshold. Um, just doing the simple math, that's not going to be enough for us to enforce our camping ordinance. And that is really the point of this, is to get people out of the woods, um, for fire safety. And that map is even worse when you factor in moving people from the project home key. Um, to that point, I agree with my colleagues that, you know, the idea of closing down a program in Pollock Pines and then expecting that Placerville is going to absorb those people when we have an overwhelming need that our residents are dealing with is, um, unfortunate and disappointing. I know that there are hotels in South Lake Tahoe, perhaps they could take some of those. You know, I, I don't want to be the reason why these people that are in this program go back onto the streets. That would be counterproductive. But it's a really unfortunate situation. Um, and I don't think we can sacrifice those beds. It's my understanding that the ARPA funds that we have set out are not part of the financing for this project, correct? I would, I think that we should entertain putting those dollars to use as we had discussed and also having the county chip in more, perhaps outside of the funding that's available through the state, to actually get the capacity to what it needs to be to solve the problem that we are trying to solve. In terms of the hotel, if it's a lease, um, which I, I agree, it should be a lease, not a purchase, and short-term, um, with a, a term-end date. Um, clearly, um, described in the agreement, and two years is definitely preferable. Three years would be like the absolute max, but, um, there, I, I'd like to make sure that the program is being run, um, with metrics in mind, and the metric should be reducing and eliminating encampments. That's what this project is for and I would want to make sure that progress was visible and happening and, you know, is clear for the community to see. Negotiating additional law enforcement resources and, um, prioritizing Perks Court over Perrose Road, um, for the reasons outlined. Perrose is very close to residential areas and a daycare, and it really does not have the walkability and nearby, um, amenities that Perks Court has. So those are kind of, that, that's the direction that I would like to give to staff. And then I would, I would also like to invite Cleve to comment and see if there's anything that you feel you need from us or...
I, I have one more thing. Um, and that's, you know, as we've all been talking and just sort of thinking this through in, in terms of moving people and how we do things and, and I know, you know, there's been some mentions of the county potentially, you know, looking deeper into whether it's ARPA funds, probably ARPA funds, not so much general fund dollars. But, you know, is there a way to keep, you know, as opposed to everyone saying goodbye to, um, Pollock's Pines at the end of June, is there a way to let, make that, you know, six more months? I mean, if we're really trying to address the, the crisis of a fire season, moving people out in June into either nowhere or into Placerville doesn't really solve the problem because it just pushes, I mean, it just exacerbates what we already have here in terms of folks living up on the hill. So is there a way to continue that a little bit further, dig deeper, looking at what we, you know, what, um, can stay a, a little bit longer out in, in Pollock Pines? Um, because it just doesn't make sense. I mean, the more I think about it, the more it, it just makes no sense to move folks from there and then backfilling the numbers that we need in order to mitigate our, our fire, um, the fire issues that are within the city limits. And again, and I don't think we should think of this as, either Placerville, homeless, or, you know, other places. This is, this is all the county. I mean, this, we are in one county. We are a jurisdiction within the county. So that, that, this falls, this isn't like a us and them. This is all of us together here. So just, I, you know, that's one other thing I love to put on the, on the table as we go back and negotiate with the county is, can you look at, you know, staying longer in Pollock Pines, even if it's for a few months? Because if we're really trying to address, again, I'll just repeat it, we're really trying to address fire season, moving 20 folks out or however many it is, backfilling doesn't solve the problem. It just rearranges the, you know, the, the deck.
Well, if I could ask, what was the vote on the Pollock Pines in terms of shutting that down? 3-2.
3-2.
So one of those persons could change their vote, come back and readdress that as well. Whether it's, I don't, I don't remember what the 2 vote was. I thought it was a 3-2, but one of them could come back and circle around on that.
I should probably let the council answer that, but I think the, the direction was related to actually purchasing the hotel. Am I wrong on that? The 3-2 vote?
Yeah, I was going to purchase.
And making a permanent home key program?
Mm-hmm. So it was right, it was operating under the room key program?
Correct.
Currently. And so the opportu, there, is there an opportunity to, to review that as a short-term, a, a more lengthy short-term for room key?
It's okay. As staff, we were directed to not pursue, so I can't speak to the ability to, to reopen that discussion from, you know, from staff's perspective.
Right, that, that you're directed by supervisors, yeah.
And I can speak to that. Um, I was opposed to discontinuing, um, Project Room Key and up in Pollock. So I was not of the prevailing party of the vote, so I cannot bring it forward. So you would have to speak with the other supervisors that discontinue that program and ask them to reconsider that.
So that was Novasil, Turnbu...
Supervisor Parlin.
And Supervisor Parlin. So those three, so we should have discussions with those three to consider, they can reconsider their vote.
That is my understanding. But also, the, the funding of, that's, that's operating that program currently, I, you know, would, would also be a factor.
Right. Okay, thank you.
The last comment I'd just like to make is, it seems like there's a unanimous and consensus to move forward with Perks Court. And if you put all of your energy and all your resources into making that happen and moving forward, that we're going to have the best success. Was that a question?
All right, are there any other comments or would someone like to, to make a stab at a motion? I would be happy to.
I, I don't think that...
I don't know if we're ready.
The short, yeah, short, the short-term, I don't think that Perk Court, Perks Court can be the only solution. I think for a long-term, I think it's a, it's, it's a, I think it's a great, uh, solution.
You don't think we could put temporary down there? To make it, to make it, you know, flow from temporary to, I mean, from short-term to long-term?
I just don't think we need to paint ourselves into an absolute corner and tell, tell, tell Cleve that, that, that there's only one solution, that's the only solution we're going to vote for and that's it.
I didn't say that. I said...
Well, that's, that's what I got from that.
Yeah, my, my point is there, there's a way forward and that's to put all your energy. Now, people are going to come up with this and that. And when you really want to do something and everybody just goes... And when you really want to do something and everybody just goes at it, it happens, you know? But I put, you know, I would consider Brew Court as a second temporary site, as the least impactful to our city.
From what I'm hearing is, short-term is at least two years. And, you know, my state of mind, two years is a long time, you know? And I just don't think, if we, if we extend, even the Broad, and especially, I'm talking about the Broadway motels, for two years, things are going to be delayed. It's just a natural, and I agree with Jackie, that once you set a goal and you say, this is when it's going to be done, da-da-da-da, it gets done. But if you allow time to, people just take advantage of that. It's just, it's nature. So I'm...
I agree with that, too. There is a risk you run when you start opening up the door on Broadway for a short-term solution, that it turns into a permanent long-term solution. And, you know, I think that, we've all expressed that concern as well. And that, you know, how much of a "not in our backyard" are we going to do and for how long? And are we going to be, take a participation, participate in this?
I don't really consider Perks Court not in our backyard.
I agree with that.
I mean, you said a half-mile. It's not even a half-mile. It's right on our border.
It is in our backyard.
And so we're going to have, we're still going to have the impacts from that as well. We're just as much as a partner in that. And I don't think we're saying not in our backyard. I'm saying that is going to be the least impactful to the neighborhoods, the community, and the businesses.
That's what I think, too. I agree.
Do you have, sorry, did you want to...
Well, just, yeah.
Do you have any suggestions that you would like to make, or any comments that you would like to make?
First of all, you know, great discussion, and that's, most of that is along the same lines that I was. My concern, when you talk about, and Daniel could probably answer this better than me, Perks Court, and then maybe if you need something else, Brew Road, I don't think that makes sense, because you're probably talking about two sprung structures, perhaps, cost-wise and et cetera. I just don't think that makes sense. If you're looking at something other than, I think I agree with Jackie, if you're looking other than Broadway, I think you should go 100% on Perks Court. I think that that makes the most sense, and in short-term, with the idea that you're going to continually add services that go into long-term services at that site. I've talked to each one of you individually, and you know that my opinion is that I'm not convinced that we completely count out Broadway, and I know that's a difference of opinion that I have. One of the reasons I say that is if, if Perks Court, or if for some reason Pollock Pines facility had to shut down, do we consider something if Perks Court cannot be up and running? Perks Court, if I recall right, Daniel, is 12 to 14 weeks, and that's probably a minimum to get that up and running.
Yeah, that's an estimated timeframe to get it up and running. And given that the project management firm hasn't been on-site to really look at those connections, we're, we're doing that tomorrow to take a look.
So it could be, could be even longer than that. But anyway, so that puts you into mid-August, maybe into September, I think, for something to happen there.
And I think that's very optimistic.
Agreed, agreed.
I know how government works.
But I think, I think you have to potentially, I'll put it, pull out all the stops, and I think there were some things that were done by declaring the emergency shelter that allows them through, you know, to bypass some purchasing rules and et cetera, for the short-term facility to get that going. And then, again, but if it can be taken as a short-term and then expanded into a long-term facility going forward, that's where I see it makes the most sense. So I think at least, as you mentioned, the project managers coming tomorrow, begin exploring that and pushing hard on that, that location. But I guess what I'm saying is maybe keep the door open a crack, maybe, in terms of if that, if there's a fail-safe there, that means it doesn't work, so.
Well, I just think it's so unfortunate that we had to, you know, that we've lost so much time by us not having what we've all talked about, this cooperative conversation. You know, all this could have, we could have been well on our way by now. So I just don't...
I don't know why we're talking about solving Pollock Pine, the Pollock Pines problem. That is a crisis created by the Board of Supervisors. I don't know why we're trying to solve that problem here tonight.
It would become ours if we allowed...
Well, the sheriffs are going to bring them down here and put them in the city of Placerville.
It's quite possible.
Just quickly, I want to mention, I have already been contacted by CIO, Mr. Ashton, about meeting with him regarding the police services issue, and I'm meeting with him on Friday to begin that, that discussion. So that piece has already started. And I want to emphasize also, I believe that, they may say differently, but I think I have a great relationship with Mr. Ashton. I think I have a good, great relationship with Daniel, too. We've talked on many occasions, and I don't see there being an issue with us being able to have the serious discussions that we need to going forward.
And I'm not doubting that. I'm, I'm not trying to, you know, encourage that we've got any kind of a bad relation. It's just that the timing of this whole thing just kind of, you know, and I think it's all been exposed tonight, and maybe this is the start, you know? This is what we needed to do, and hopefully we can move forward.
I think that's a great segue. I don't know, segue. I think that what you said makes a lot of sense about why is the Pollock Pines one becoming our problem? And I think that's, and I think that we need to have an honest conversation with the Board of Supervisors. And if that means another joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors on this, it's been a couple of years. And I think it's, I think it'd be, I think, I think that should be a request, to have that conversation with them, and not just, you know, for them to sit on their dais and say what they say, and then they lobby a ball to us, and we sit here and say what we're going to say, and some of these people out here sit in between this, and they're going back and forth, and you get public comment, and then we go back. I think it makes sense to really have a heart-to-heart conversation with them about this.
Well, weren't we going to have a joint meeting, but because of COVID, it, I mean, we were all supposed to meet, you know?
Yeah.
And I...
I don't know that, that...
I thought it got canceled. We were, we talked about having a...
Maybe. I don't know, but want to move forward, I think.
Well, all I want to, if I could comment on that quickly, I don't disagree with having a joint meeting, but please do not delay moving forward.
No.
Because that could take us, I will admit, a month or more to get that scheduled.
No, no, no. I didn't mean that.
So I just want to emphasize that.
All right. I do want to wrap this item up, as it's going late and we have other items to get to. I want to offer Supervisor Thomas and Mr. Del Monte a chance to make a final comment.
I'll be very brief. I appreciated the discussion tonight. I've taken lots of notes, so I appreciate that. Before I let Daniel wrap this up, I would just like to, looking forward to working cooperatively with you moving forward, I do want to press upon you the incredibly difficult situation that Health and Human Services has been in the last five, six months. I think it's really important to recognize. Our director was extended, had extended bout and really difficult health challenges with COVID during January and February. The board gave direction to our staff to move forward on this. You know, he was out for months with Daniel carrying the water with his absence, as well as staff, and then the Board of Supervisors switched direction on them. They had to pivot. They had to stand this issue up. We are down 20% of our staffing, and now we have, you know, Mr. Simone is no longer with us, and once again, Daniel has stepped up his interim. So, you know, I ask for some grace for our staff. They are doing a yeoman's job and just carrying heavy water on this. And so, you know, I had a conversation with Mayor Taylor and Vice Mayor Saragosa and City Manager, letting you know the direction I was thinking of. So please know that our lack of engagement, robust engagement prior to this is not indicative of where we're going in the future. Very frankly, staff needed direction from our board to know where to go. So I will bear the brunt of that and promise that we will move forward collaboratively, because our staff has done an amazing job getting us to this point, and I look forward to moving forward with you.
Thank you.
So for the sake of wrapping this up, I took copious notes. There were many questions answered, you know, speaking of the process to locate locations. I'm happy to draft something in writing to your council, if you'd like, and answer all those questions that were asked. There was also some, some public comments made around, you know, law enforcement calls for service, et cetera. And there is, I'll speak a little bit to that, just because, you know, during the board presentation this last week, I referenced different case studies that show the success of these navigation centers. And so some examples of these are, the Berkeley Stair Center is the name, and they target encampments with that project. It's specifically for encampments. It allows the city to target encampments in high-risk areas, including key business areas. They've experienced 80% of those that came into the program, slept in a camp the night before. So they're getting them right into that, that project. 120, 100, I'm sorry, 170 individuals were brought in the project the first year. 128 exited the program with 64% reaching permanent housing, 13% exiting to a temporary destination, and 23% that exited back into homelessness, unfortunately, but the vast majority exiting that. The City of Santa Rosa's project, Navigation Center project, they, within its first year, they reduced chronic homelessness within the city by 20%. They also reduced overall homelessness by 16%, a significant positive impact on local businesses. There was a 77% reduction in law enforcement engagement with those folks in that program after being in there, and a 56% reduction in ambulance transports. I won't ramble on, but I will, I will highlight the, a March 27 article in the Tahoe Daily Tribune regarding the home key program for that Tahoe Coalition operates. And granted, it's not a navigation center, but what it has in common is it get folks off the streets and into a housing destination with those wraparound services. Their police department reports, calls for service in 2020 were 1,159, and they dropped to just 796 in 2021. 32% decrease in that one year, and they associate that with that project. So there's, there's plenty of proven evidence that shows that this should have a significant reduction in calls for service to law enforcement, and I'm happy to provide details and responses to all the questions via email. So thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you so much for being here. Okay, so bringing it back, would anyone like to make a motion, or would you like me to take the first stab at it and take it from there?
Massage it?
And you can, yeah. Okay. I would like to direct staff to work with county staff and our supervisor to move forward with a homeless shelter navigation center to be set up, you know, as soon as feasible for fire reasons. And I would like our city manager to advocate on behalf of the city for sufficient capacity and prioritizing those in the Placerville encampments, not just Broadway, but Quartz Mountain and all of, all of the encampments, because they're all present a fire risk. That the facility be visually discreet, that it require metrics of success that can be measured and are visible to the community. That we advocate for additional law enforcement resources and prioritizing Perks Court over Perrose Road. And if the Broadway hotels must be the short-term site, that it be on a temporary lease with a finite term and not a purchase.
I would like to see that, let's put a time limit on that Broadway. I mean, this shelter should be built by the end of the year. I'd like to see a six-month if I'm going to support that. I represent 11,000 people in this city, and I, I can't even see myself saying that I should say that we should even consider six months. But if it absolutely, positively, and we're going to put in the legalese, you know, they can be the priority into the permanent center, but that we're not going to let this drag on, on Broadway.
That the lease on Broadway should be six months?
Max.
I can't support that. I just don't think that that's operationally realistic.
How long is it going to take to even set it up to get it started? So we have to consider that, I believe.
Yeah. And I, you know, I also, I do want to build in flexibility. I think that we, in our discussion, have made direction to staff very clear on where we stand and what our concerns are. But I do, I don't want to tie hands and prevent a problem from being solved.
I understand, but they've said it's the quickest and easiest. It's the obvious thing that's going to move forward, and on a very short-term basis, I would, but I'm not going to support two years. That's...
But, but the next thing would have to be built, and they can't set up Broadway within six months and then also set up another location within, it's just, I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate that. And I, and I also want to express that Broadway is not the preferred location. And if we can really, you know, go hard on Perks Court, that's, that's the preference, I gather, that's the preference of the council. But I, I just don't think that that's realistic, and I don't want to put in terms that will doom the project.
I, I agree with you. I would also like to strongly, strongly, request that they reconsider the Pollock Pines project, at least not, at least for room key. I think that they, they are concentrating all the impacts on the city, and that is an obvious way that they can reduce the impact and also allow us to have greater opportunities to move, make beds available for moving people out of the high-risk fire danger zones that we have.
I totally agree, Dennis. I think that has to be, someone could advocate for the continuation. It won't be room key, because obviously the room key funds are expended, but that they still look within the budget to continue the housing at the Pollock Pines location, you know, for whatever amount of time, but...
They have ARPA funds, they have general funds, they have, they can go out for more grants, they have, they have opportunities to consider. So it's not, it's not just a done deal. In my, in my opinion, I think they need to reconsider that. I think that they are all very eager to vote for putting it in the city. And, and I'm all for being a partner. I'm not all for taking it all.
So it's, and I, you know, we hear rumors, but it's amazing to me how all of a sudden Pollock Pines had to close, you know? I mean, come on. So objections over neighbors, they didn't even know it was there. Exactly, so...
At this point, if we could just focus on getting the motion.
Right. So, but I don't want, I, I agree with Jackie to a point, but I don't think six months is long enough. I think probably 12 months. I don't know, how long, how long would it be to set it up?
I think realistically, it would be two years as the short-term. But again, my motion is directing staff to prioritize Perks Court and the feasibility of that over Broadway hotels.
I'm not going to consider two years. I don't either. I'll go a year, but not any longer.
I don't even know if we were putting a time...
I did not.
There's no timestamp on it, on the motion, so...
For the purpose of...
I think we're allowing, yeah, for negotiations and...
It will come back to the council, whatever it is, I'm assuming, for approval at some point.
And I'd hope that, you know, if they're going to consider that, they'd also consider, you know, supporting other options that may be there. I don't, I don't think right now there's a lot of flexibility built into Supervisor Thomas's motion, and I think we should, you know, you know, do the same in an effort to, you know, allow them to look for solutions that are meaningful for both the county and the city.
I agree. It's, the only thing I would say is a friendly amendment is exactly what Councilman Thomas said, which was to add in, you know, the continuation of some sort within the discussions of, of the Pollock Pines location.
Okay. I'm, I am...
Well, I think we, it was pretty plain with what Supervisor Wendy Thomas said, that, you know, I think she's worked really hard to get as far as this, and I think she's up against some negativity, and that's what we need to address.
And, you know, the continuation of the Pollock Pines, you know, it may not be at the hotel, but it may be looking at the capacity and making sure that if you're going to add those to this program, that you're adding the equivalent capacity, because we have our own problem that we're trying to address with this. So, and that's, that's built into my motion, advocating for sufficient capacity.
I'm not to belabor this, but you're shifting the cost from up there to down here.
Right.
And so that cost is actually, just, you can take that right off the top of this program that you're putting in, as well as the number of people you're serving. You know, it's a revolving door. Some people come in and stay in the program, some people go out. Let's not belabor this anymore. Go for, go for your motion.
All right. So do I need to clarify the motion?
Yeah, I want to hear the whole motion. I want to know what I'm agreeing to or not.
All right. So I would like to direct our city manager, staff to work with county staff. staff and our supervisor to move forward with the short-term and long-term shelter and navigation center, um, and advocate on behalf of the city for sufficient capacity, um, that will allow us to enforce our camping ordinance, prioritizing those in the encampments in Placerville, making the facility visually discreet, using metrics to measure success, um, and the, the success should be the reduced and eliminated encampments. That should be the measure. Um, advocating for additional law enforcement resources, prioritizing Perks Court over Perrose Road, um, and prioritizing Perks Court over the Broadway Hotels, um, and if the Broadway Hotels are chosen, advocating for a temporary lease with a finite term, um, and not for a purchase of the hotels. And looking at options to continue operations in some capacity at the Pollock Pines Hotel.
I'll second that motion.
We have a first and a second. Can we get a roll call? Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Nell?
Nell.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um...
Can we have a break?
Um, I, I realize that this item went long, and that we also have a consultant here for twelve point one, and I, I want to thank you, and I apologize for the long wait. With that, I am going to, um, recess for a five-minute break, just to give people a moment.
All right, I'll, I'll, um, bring this meeting back, and we will go back in the agenda to twelve point one. And this item is in regards to our water bond refinancing, and I'm going to put it into the hands of our Director Dave Warren.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So, back in March twenty-sixth, or twenty-second at your meeting, um, you directed staff to take several actions. One of those was to pursue a direct placement financing along with our municipal advisor, uh, Anna Sarabian. And we have some good news. Uh, we did pursue, uh, and we have secured a direct placement financing with JP Morgan Chase Bank. Uh, so we're real excited to present this, and tonight, uh, Anna Sarabian is here, uh, from Fieldman Rollup and Associates to present our findings and recommendations. So, I'll hand it over to Anna.
Council, uh, thank you. Uh, so tonight, uh, we want to provide an overview of the process and all the activities that occurred since, uh, your direction on March twenty-second to proceed with the private placement refinancing. Uh, just a brief background, as you know, the bonds were issued back in two thousand and six by the Public Financing Authority, and due to, um, attractive interest rates, now was, uh, an opportunity for the city to consider this refinancing. Uh, for all the reasons discussed at the March twenty-second meeting, the best approach was to, uh, look at the private placement or direct placement financing, and, um, uh, based on the council direction, uh, a firm was engaged to serve as placement agent. That was Hilltop Securities. Uh, Hilltop Securities, um, distributed the solicitation, uh, for, uh, this private placement, uh, opportunity to twenty-five banks. And so essentially, uh, that solicitation described the bonds that are being refinanced and, um, the terms for the bonds, and those bonds mature, uh, on September first, two thousand and thirty-four. So as part of the refinancing, we're not extending the term. We're keeping the same, uh, final maturity. Uh, and, um, we looked at, um, various, um, features that were important for the city. Uh, one was, um, debt service coverage ratio, the fact that, uh, when you do a direct placement, very often, um, you can make a more effective use of, uh, funds on hand, such as the existing, um, debt service reserve fund for the two thousand and six bonds. That can be contributed to buy down the refinancing, so the amount of, um, bonds outstanding after you've refinanced is actually lower than what you're refinancing. And we also wanted some flexibility for the city, that, um, in the future, if, uh, rates are low again, uh, and as you have fewer years remaining, can you move down the yield curve, as we say, uh, you have another shot at paying off or refinancing the bonds. And so those were all features that were important for us. So as a part of the solicitation to those twenty-five banks, uh, five banks, uh, responded. And based on, uh, all the proposals and these features that, uh, we were looking at, JP Morgan Chase was, um, the most responsive bidder, and, uh, after negotiations, their offered rate, uh, for the duration of the term of the bonds through two thousand and thirty-four was two point nine nine percent. That rate is fixed, uh, throughout the life of the bonds, and it's also fixed through, uh, the closing of the refinancing, which is targeted for May third. Uh, I want to take a minute and explain why this is so important, uh, the fact that, uh, the rate was, uh, fixed, uh, because the market's been so volatile, uh, from the beginning of the year until now. Uh, the Municipal Market Data Index, which is a benchmark we use for tax-exempt municipal bonds, has increased by more than hundred fifty, uh, basis points, or by more than one point five percent. Um, in, uh, the same, uh, context, uh, we keep hearing that, uh, the Federal Reserve will be rising, raising interest rates. Uh, we already got one increase in March, and there is another meeting coming in June, uh, and actually, there is a meeting in May also, and the expectation is that, um, there will be further rate increases. So rates have been rising steadily, and, uh, every day really matters, and so locking in that, uh, rate, uh, or having the ability to lock the rate protects the city from, um, having the savings eroded further due to volatility. Um, so we looked at two, uh, two, two structures for the refinancing. Just to provide, uh, a little bit of, um, background again, the two thousand and six bonds, uh, have a, a structure that results in, um, a pretty backloaded debt service and principal, and so in early years, you have lower payments, but, uh, at the end, uh, payments really jump, and you'll see a few graphs, um, in the next couple of slides. I'll, I'll show you how that looks. And so one, um, one alternative we looked at was keeping the same profile, debt service profile. And so, um, very often, when you do a refinancing, you just do it for proportional savings, so keeping the same contour of debt service, just lowering the debt service, um, in, in a parallel shift. And so under that structure, using the two point nine nine, uh, percent interest rate, uh, the total, um, projected savings, gross savings, uh, were roughly five point one million over the term of the bonds, and the net present value savings, which are the savings after you net out all the costs, uh, are two point two nine percent, or thirteen point eighty-five percent of the paramount being refunded. Uh, just to give you the policy perspective here, typically, you consider a refinancing if you are, um, ensuring a net present value savings of at least three percent. Uh, that's the, the bare minimum. Uh, and very often, agencies like to see at least five percent, and so we're at thirteen point eight percent, so that's, that's pretty good. Uh, then the other structure we evaluated, uh, working with staff, was a gradual ramp-up in debt service. Uh, so you can, uh, achieve a few objectives. The first one is, you don't have such a sharp increase on the back end, which will necessitate potentially really sharp, uh, jumping rates. Uh, so you're, you're smoothing out the, the debt service contour. Uh, and in addition, because you're not backloading the debt service, you have savings, uh, overall. You save on interest costs. And so if you compare the debt service structures, uh, you're saving about half a million, uh, if you were to consider, uh, the gradual ramp-up structure. Under that one, the, um, gross savings are about five point six million, and net present value savings are the same. The difference is, and I'll show you that in a minute, the difference is that while with the first structure, you have cash flow savings in every year, with this, uh, gradual ramp-up structure, in the first few years, you will have negative cash flow savings, because you're now accelerating repaying the, the debt service. So let me show you, uh, what that means. So, on the left-hand side, uh, we're comparing, uh, the status quo debt service for the two thousand and six bonds, and that's in, um, the brown color, uh, to the potential proportional debt service structure for the refunding bonds in blue. And so you can see they mimic exactly the same shape, and, um, the difference, the delta between the two lines are, are the savings. But look at, look at the jump. After, um, two thousand and twenty-eight, uh, the debt service really jumps significantly to over two million per year. Now, the right-hand side graph, uh, shows you, uh, the other altern- alternative, which is the gradual ramp-up, and again, in brown is the current debt service, in blue, you can see the refunding debt service. And so you can see that there is a small triangle, uh, early on, between twenty-two and twenty-eight, that the blue line exceeds the brown line, uh, a little bit. But then, you can see that after they cross over in two thousand and twenty-eight, uh, and the blue line, uh, flattens out around two thousand and thirty or so, uh, it stays flat, and it's right around one point seven million plus minus per year compared to close to two point seven million per year. So, significant, uh, difference there. Um, so just to show you a comparison of the two refunding alternatives, again, in, um, blue here, you can see the proportional debt service structure, which is the status quo proportional to the existing bonds, and then the, um, the red or the, or the brown is the gradual, uh, increase, the gradual smoothing-out structure. So, uh, again, if you compare on a net present value basis, both produce almost identical net present value savings overall. If you compare the gross savings, the smoothed structure allows for about five hundred thousand more in, uh, savings overall, uh, over the term of the bonds. Um, the key provisions that are associated with the private placement are summarized here. I did talk about debt service coverage, and so the bank originally, uh, requested one point two-five times coverage, or hundred twenty-five percent. Uh, however, uh, these refunding bonds will be on parity with the two thousand and six state revolving fund loan, and that loan has hundred twenty percent coverage. And so, uh, we went back to the bank and told them that because it's the same lien priority, they need to have the same coverage, and so, uh, we were able to, uh, have the bank agree to one point two times coverage. Uh, the additional bonds test is if the city were to issue, uh, additional, uh, bonds down the road for additional projects, uh, then the same requirement will apply, that you need to show that you can cover debt service by at least one point two times. Uh, and then, um, very typical for such financings, there is a requirement that, uh, the R T financials are provided to the bank every year, and, um, uh, the city provides a copy of its annual budget, uh, within thirty days of, uh, adoption. Um, the recommendation tonight is to, uh, consider adopting, uh, the two resolutions summarized here. Uh, and before you, uh, consider, um, those resolutions, we have a bond counsel tonight, uh, here, who will walk through the documents and summarize what, uh, those documents, uh, accomplish and, and what the meaning of each document is. But before I hand it over to him, uh, let me pause and see if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
One question. Uh, thank you for the presentation so far. I just had a question, and I don't know, maybe this is Dave as well, but I know in the, in the staff report, you know, when we, when we locked in the, the one point two zero to, to keep it with the previous, it also, when we had, when the term sheet was redone, it also increased the interest rate. Um, is the savings that we're getting from keeping it at one, one point two zero, one point two times, I mean, essentially what I wanted to know is, are we leaving anything on the table because, uh, of the increased interest rate once we had to go back to the table on the term sheet? And is there any, there was no other way to claw back that, that, um, original interest rate?
Trust me, I tried.
Okay.
I, I, I tried. Um, so, no. Um, um, we, so they, they bid two point nine seven originally, um, but at the end of the day, it ended up being two point nine nine, and, um, we're in a public meeting, um, so I need to choose my words carefully here. Um, but, um, the, there was a logistical issue of, um, the bid being provided and, uh, by when the term sheet needs to be, um, signed, and because rates move all the time.
Right.
They move all the time throughout a single day, so it's not just moving from one day to the, uh, to another, but it's also in between, um, the hours of the day. And so because of timing, um, the rates, uh, that the bank uses to benchmark off of when they provide their bids had shifted. And so, we had the choice, uh, and the choice was, we could take a risk and gamble on delaying for another day and seeing if we're lucky and, uh, rates go back down, or we could lock at the two point nine nine. And it was my recommendation and encouragement to staff to consider locking in at two point nine nine, because, um, rates were moving and, um, a bird in hand is, um, better than, uh, losing the savings. So, uh, at the end of the day, that was, that was the best, um, alternative for the city. And, uh, the bank did reference, uh, the change in, uh, the coverage from one point two five to one point two times, but, uh, honestly, I don't think that was the reason.
That was the reason? Okay, I understood. What's it, what's it, uh, is it the LIBOR, or what's it, uh, the...
I think they benchmark off of treasuries.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Plus a spread.
I appreciate it, and we appreciate the candor as well, so, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions?
Can we, if, if I'm, I'm trying to remember, can we bond against sales tax dollars? It's kind of a side...
My understanding is you can.
Okay.
But, that's a very simple answer.
Right. Yeah, I, I know that we've had discussions about this in the past, because what, because what I'm thinking about is what limitations, if any, this will cause us, if, it's, it's, say, the limitations on this bond is going to be the same limitations we would have had previously. It sounds like there's, with, does that sound correct? There's not going to be any additional...
Long-term, it puts you, it puts you in a better position financially.
Mm-hmm.
Because you're saving money, you're going to pay less in debt, five million dollars less in debt service.
What I, what I'm asking is the, the restrictions between this bond and the, and the last, the existing bond and what we're going for. There's no additional restrictions. There's no additional restrictions. What, in terms of, if we were to go out for any other bonds, this is the same restrictions in terms of the coverage that we'd have to have with this one as opposed to the old one?
The old bond had a coverage ratio requirement of 120.
120, so that's the same. So there's really no additional restrictions, correct?
Not in that respect, no.
Okay. Because if we, what's going through the back of my mind is if we go out for any road bonds on the sales tax dollars that, and we try and accelerate our road work and things like that, and we bond against the sales tax that we currently are using for roads, land sewer, measure H and measure L, that won't, this won't affect that?
Well, we are committing measure H to the repayment, repayment of the debt service. The primary source is your sewer rates.
Right.
But yeah, it, we did ask you to restrict measure H too. It was already restricted to the sewer enterprise fund. We just asked you to formally restrict it. So it really didn't change anything.
See, that's what we did last time.
The other piece was the debt service reserve you established.
Yeah.
And that was to facilitate better rates when we went out to market.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
There are no other questions. I want to introduce bond counsel from Northern Rose Fulbright.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, members of the council. My name is Seppon Haitan. I'm with Northern Rose Fulbright. We are your bond counsel. Just wanted to walk through quickly the indenture that's in front of you. It is the main contract governing this financing. It's a contract that would be between the city, the bond owner, and the trustee for the bonds. There are two major components in it. The one that you're probably most interested in relates to the bonds. And it will essentially translate the final term sheet into formal contract text. So what you have in front of you and five pages in the term sheet, we will magically convert to 50 pages of contract language. It'll cover the main things that, some of which were presented in the slides, your repayment schedule, your interest rate, your repayment dates. It'll have provisions for the early repayment that was mentioned. And it'll include the financial covenants for rate setting at 120% coverage and additional debt at 1.2 times. It'll include a basic covenant that you'll continue to operate and maintain the wastewater system because it will indicate that that plus your sales tax is the source of repayment. It will also specify that there is no other source of repayment. So your general fund will not be committed to these bonds in any way. And it will also include the financial reporting requirements and some basic tax covenants that will essentially ensure the tax exempt status of the bonds for their term. The second part of the contract relates to the trustee and essentially relates to banking services. The trustee will be your intermediary for receipt from the city of the amounts for payment. And the trustee will then transmit those amounts to the bond owner. Trustee will also be at closing involved in paying off the 2006 financing. They'll transfer the payoff amount for that. Interestingly, the trustee on our 2006 bonds is the same bank. So it will be a very seamless process. And we'll administer the payment of the cost of issuance at the city's direction. So your service providers will get paid out of those proceeds with a requisition from the city. Going forward, after closing, the trustee will receive monies for payment on the regularly scheduled dates and transmit them to the bond purchaser. And if you decide at some later point that you want to refinance this refinancing again, the trustee will facilitate that for you with notices and with transmitting that payment amount, payoff amount. Are there any questions on the indenture?
Any questions? No questions. Thank you very much. And again, thank you for, both of you, for your patience tonight. All right. Dave, is there anything that you would like to add? Or should I go ahead and open it up to public comment?
One piece I wanted to add was in regards to the debt service payments and the rise of debt service payments. I'll go back to this. So the reason why, I don't know if I touched on this last time, but the reason why the original bonds jumped up in debt service payment in '29, 2020, '29, was because originally, the 2006 SRF loan was a 20-year loan. But due to financial challenges back during the Great Recession and the cost of the plant, we decided to extend that loan 30 years. The problem with that is in 2029 through about 2039, we'll still be paying for the SRF loan. So that debt service schedule really doesn't work. And you could, the big jump. So in other words, in order to make that large payment there, you would have to raise your rates significantly. So our thought was is to gradually take small bites of the elephant, if you will, over time. The increase each year, starting in 2023, is about $100,000 increase. To your rates today, it's about a 1.47% increase in rates. So incrementally, you know, we're planning on doing another study. And we would incorporate those higher debt service payments in those early years in your rate study. So I just wanted to daylight that and make you aware of that. I believe this is the best way to approach it, is just gradually increase the debt service. So, and then ultimately wind up in 2030 with your ultimate payment.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So the, that triangle that's in there where we're actually paying more, how are we, do we have reserves sufficient to weather that increase in payments during, from basically '23 to '29? Because we'll be, we'll be paying, it'll be a deficit.
Yeah. You currently have a contingency of about $600,000 built into your operating budget. And the increase each year would be an additional $100,000 from the previous year's payment. So it would carry, that alone, you could utilize for that purpose. In addition to that, you have your debt service reserve that you could fall back onto.
But we're, over the next six years, we're going to be paying more than we would have. And I realize that there's a big jump that we'd have to save up for and hopefully never.
Right, right.
But the cash flow, where's that coming from, that cash? I mean, you just said it, but you're going to need to say it to me again, or?
What it means is, is that beginning in 2023, you would build in your budget an additional $100,000 in that year for debt service. So that would come from net revenues.
Okay.
Your budget currently could absorb that without even touching your rates.
All right.
But due diligence would be to include that in your rate study when we do the rate study next time.
So it'll be basically coming out of our annual budget. It'll just be part of that.
Correct.
The increase.
Correct.
Okay.
Can I come on and comment on that quickly? I was discussing this with Dave. There's a couple other factors. You know, you do have measure H that potentially can contribute towards this. Measure H, hopefully, sales tax continues to rise. That could impact that. The other thing that I think is important, and I'll mention this first, is that, as Dave mentioned, we're getting ready to go into another rate study for the next five years. And so that will take all this into account. One of those things that I'm hoping will be a very positive impact, as you recall, our solar project that we are bringing online, which we anticipate could be somewhere over $300,000 a year in electrical savings to the plant. And with the grant that we received, full grant for that solar project from the state, that is all savings. So I think there are some positive factors that will impact our rates going forward when we look at that, so.
I think, I'm sorry. The savings would be approximately $300,000 for the solar. Yeah, okay.
I just want to have the conversation about where this money, at least, I mean, because there's a bigger conversation than we would have had in 2020 or '29. But for this, for this next six years, what I just, it was important for me to have that conversation about where that money's coming from.
Dave, after 2034, when we are all paid off, does that mean that we can drastically reduce rates? Or does that mean that we will just have to start all over again with major maintenance projects?
Well, there's two things. One would be you have a $45 million plant that needs maintenance, annual maintenance, and also deferred maintenance. And it's very expensive. The other piece is we don't know what our NPDS permit is going to require of us in 2034. It could drastically, the, and city engineer Neves could probably speak to this better than I can, but they constantly raise the bar of the requirements of our plant. I'm not sure what that's going to be at that time. It could require additional improvements to your plan.
Okay. Did you want to make a comment?
I did, I did a little bit of on the fly research and contrasting general obligation bonds, which are funded by avalorium taxes, property taxes, revenue bonds, actually, that are funding an enterprise system like the wastewater plant, is derived solely from those rates. And so we just have to raise rates. We cannot rely on other sources, so.
Okay, thank you. All right. No further questions. I'll open this up to the public. Anyone would like to comment on item 12.1?
Sue Rodman, member of the Major H and L Committee, or H and L, yeah. I know Dave's been working very hard on this. It's been several months under discussion and to see what could we do because that, I hope to still be here in 2029. And that would be a horrendous rate increase that you'd have to pass on to consumers. And if the solar program pans out, as we hope it will, that should take some, some amount of pressure off of the rates. And if we make some savings, there's still a lot of sewer projects that need to be done in Placerville. So if we have savings from redoing these bonds, maybe we can finally get rid of the rest of our orange bird pipe. And maybe we can get all of the sewer pipes out of all of the creeks. So it's not like there's nothing to do with this money. So Major H has been committed to paying for this. And I think if I'm correct, Major H will pretty much cover the loan payments that we're looking at here. But if then, so any savings that we get, we can certainly pull back into projects. I know Rebecca has a long list of things that need to happen in this city. We're an old city. We have old infrastructure. And it leaks like a sieve and needs to be fixed. And so we're working very hard to do that with our two measures and also to keep our city solvent. This will help a lot to keep our city in good shape debt wise, I think. So I support it.
Thank you, Sue.
Kathy Lishman, I, I think it's difficult to see about, to think about setting it up for rate increases because of that triangle. And I think that you really need to think about the people that are on a fixed income, a really fixed income. There's a lot of low income people. There's a lot of people that probably have trouble paying their water rates, I mean, their sewer rates right now. So you're going to, some of you are going to leave that decision up to a future council. And it's something that's hard to think about.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, I will close public comment and bring this back to the council. Further discussion or a motion?
I'll, I'll go ahead and make a, a motion here. I do know that if we had continued on this old path when it hit 2028, I will be nowhere near here. Because this would just, everybody would rightfully.
Someone would be cursing us.
Yes, with pitchforks and such. So thank you, Dave, for bringing this forward and for all the hard work. So I will make a motion to, one, adopt a resolution ratifying the term sheet with J P Morgan Chase Bank. And then, B, authorize the city manager who is designated to take any actions negotiating remaining terms and executing documents related to the said private placement financing. And two, adopt a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of wastewater revenue bonds and approving the execution of a trust indenture and other documents and actions related thereto.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. We'll call this.
Councilmember Barelli.
Aye.
Councilmember No.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, and thanks again. All right, moving on to 12.1.
I would assume that they never assumed they were going to understand. There's so much on homelessness and all the controversies. I bet you learned a lot tonight, huh?
And you are welcome to stay till the end of the meeting. But if you left now, I would not be offended in any way.
Thank you for your patience, yes.
Item 12.3, adopt a resolution authorizing the community services director to enter into a contract with Capra Environmental Services Corps for goat grazing on the 5.84 acres of Lower Main Street and the seven acres at Lyons Park for a total of 9,141 and retroactively approving the service for Gold Bug Park for a total of all projects, 31,341. I could have summarized that, but I didn't realize it was going to be so much on my mouthful. Mr. Zeller, you have this item.
Thank you, mayor and council. As you know, staff had sought a fuel reduction grant from the state in 2021, but it was not a successful grant. It sought to reduce fire fuels on about 77 acres of city property, 11 different sites. The city council was able to dedicate ARPA funding towards this effort after the failed grant attempt with a total of $619,000 for this fiscal year and next combined. I prioritize three properties that represented a majority of the high fuel areas for a first phase. And that represented the dollars for this fiscal year. And that is 40 acres of Gold Bug Park, about seven acres of Lyons Park, and almost six acres on the hillside of Lower Main just off the El Dorado Trail section from Fulmer's auto body to the edge of our trail maintenance boundary. This staff report seeks approval for award of the low bid from Capra Environmental for a total of $31,341. In order to proceed with the project immediately, the city manager did approve the work for Gold Bug, totaling $22,200 under his discretionary authority. So the request from staff is in front of you. The quote tab sheet and the maps are included in the staff report. And I can take any questions.
All right, questions for Carrie?
Just to clarify for the public. So we are going to, for the remaining of this fiscal year, which ends at the end of June, we're going to get three of these properties done. But then we're going to get the rest of the properties done by the fall in next fiscal year?
Yeah, the remaining eight parcels, I'm already getting additional quotes on right now.
Okay. I will open this up to the public.
Hooray for Councilmember Barelli and the goats.
I'm smiling.
Yes, you should be. This is really great news. This is, goats do a great job. The Forest Service has used them for quite a few years and have been very pleased with the results, especially if we can keep the mountain lions from eating the goats up there. But in the city, that shouldn't be as much of a problem. So I'm. But in the city, that shouldn't be as much of a problem. So I'm really happy to see these, these little munchings, since they will eat it. They eat the grass, they eat the weeds, they eat the brush, and all they leave behind is little fertilizer pellets. So it's a great project, and good for you, Terry, and glad you were able to get this done. And, and to have the rest of it done in the next fiscal year, great. Because again, they can work through the time when you don't want a chainsaw out there because you don't want the sparks. But if you have goats eating in the middle of the summer, it's really not a problem. So, good work.
Thank you, Sue.
Kirk Smith? I think it's exciting news, and what I'm hoping is that after you see this done, you'll support a resolution which would allow private parties in the city to use goats. I'll tell you why. I spend $2,000 to $4,000 every year, maybe five or six acres total to clean brush. But one year, I use goats for two acres. It's amazing. They come in with an electric fence that they move each day to contain the goats. And just as you were told, they eat everything. A weed eater will not eat blackberries. It just chews them up. And using gasoline-powered motors scares me. Imagine putting a hot muffler from one of those things down on, on dry grass. One of the worst fires we've had in Northern California several years ago, one of the deadliest, was reported by Cal Fire to be started by a spark from a hammer. Imagine, a hammer. So you don't have that with goats. So that's how it can be done, even if you don't have your property circled off in fences. So it's good news, no kidding. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. All right, I'm going to close public comment.
I have a question for Terry. Did they give you a timeframe, Terry? And maybe you already included it, and I just didn't see it.
The, the optimum, we wanted to get this locked in because, as you imagine, there's high demand for these goats. So you gotta get in a line. It's like trying to get into a VIP area. So we wanted to make sure that we were solidly scheduled, and because of the late rains, June 1st is actually optimum time for the little goats to get chomping on everything. So we are assured from our contractor that we're going to be able to get those at optimum time, and then we're going to balance that against the other work that we're going to be doing with the tree companies.
Terry, all I'm seeing now is goats with little, like, lanyard with all-access passes around their necks. That's just gonna be my visualization going forward.
I'm glad I could provide that.
I don't know if I asked this previously, but we don't have to pay them prevailing wages, do we?
Not the goats.
Okay, good.
But the, the goat herders, you do.
Okay. I don't, is that a thing? So the, the other question I have is, this is really a great idea for this year. Is this, is this, have you, have we established any, is there an expense in our budget that we are accessing? Because this is ARPA funds right now, is that correct? And so those are gone, so we'll have to reconsider this next year and figure out what we're doing. Actually, in a couple weeks, three weeks, maybe, something like that. Yeah, so, okay, so that's, that's kind of where, okay, you answered my question. Thanks.
I think that's gauging the effectiveness of what we get, and I've, I've seen goats in action in Chico and also in Folsom. And I think if we can gauge the effectiveness and look at the cost per acre, I think that's something that we should consider as a rotating maintenance element.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, and this is in response to the last public speaker, the city does allow private parties to utilize goats on their, on their property, and we have done it in the past.
All right, thank you. All right. Would anyone, I, I opened this up, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little tired. I opened this up to public comment. So would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to move that we adopt item 12.3.
I second that.
All right, we have a first and a second.
Councilmember Barelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Ta, Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I, I just want to say I am very excited to have goats in Placerville. And I, I agree with Kirk Smith that this should be available to individuals as well, but it sounds like it is, so I'm glad to hear that. And.
As long as they don't overstay their stay, right? By that, I meant.
If they're working hard.
I know, no, no, what I'm saying, because we have an ordinance that we don't allow, that, that's what I, where I was, okay, get it?
All right, moving on to 12.4. This is for, let's see, the city pool financing. Mr. Zeller, again.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Today, I've got a staff report that's kind of a two-for. We're looking to adopt a resolution that actually rescinds the adopted resolution of January 11th, which requested $20,000 in financial assistance from Eldorado County for the 2122 fiscal year. And the reason for that rescension is because the county requires a four-fifths vote, and we only had three council members at that time. So we've rewritten a resolution to clear up that formality. So it'll be identical resolution, but we just need that passage again in order to move forward with getting that payment. And more importantly, we're looking at adopting a second resolution requesting $112,568 in financial assistance from Eldorado County for this fiscal year, coming up to help offset some of the maintenance costs associated with the Aquatic Center. As you know, we had discussed this in January, where the city has had a long-term relationship with the county, and had established through a survey that 76% of the people that utilize the Aquatic Center are outside of the city limits. And therefore, the additional financial assistance was established back in the 1314 fiscal year and went on through 1819. Then the, the Board of Supervisors requested that we, after that five-year commitment, that we go on an annual basis. And so the $20,000 for the fiscal year, 2122, was discussed and passed in, on January 11th. Since then, and because of some financial review, the city did come to the conclusion that if you look at an average of the costs between 2014 and 2021, the actual 76% amount that the county's portion would be, if we looked at it proportionally to the budget, is a little over $112,000. And that is in your staff report. There is, however, a new development, and the County Board of Supervisors included actually an amount of $76,500 in their budget hearing, I believe it was yesterday. And so with this new development, the council can still pass the resolution with the higher amount, but staff wanted to mention that it may be kicked back to the city. And so staff recommendation actually is to change the amount for this year to the $76,500, keeping in mind that this amount is going to be back up for discussion in 2324. So getting back to your options, the council can rescind, rescind the resolution 9040 and approve the resolution requesting $20,000 from the county, and the resolution requesting the increased amount for fiscal year 2223. You can approve the one resolution only, direct us to take no action or take other actions. And so I can answer any questions. Hopefully, I've provided enough clarity on that.
Thank you, Terry. Questions? Could you explain a little bit the justification for going with a different number than what we provided the county?
From what I understand, the, the Board of Supervisors looked at the, the numbers that we supplied as part of the operational budget, and they had some question whether or not some of the, some of the costs in the categories were purely maintenance or operations. And I think that that was, they did some internal math to come up with the 76.5.
Okay. Thank you. And question for Cleve. Cleve, do you have that section of government code handy by chance?
It is in, I believe, in the staff, oh, no, it was, it was in the letter that we sent to them, I apologize.
Okay.
And what code is that?
It's, it's a government code that states that cities can ask counties for assistance.
2551, 25551.
That's the government code?
Yes.
It states. Let's see. I'll summarize, but if the legislative body of any city finds that any public park, beach, golf course, or recreation ground belonging to the city is being used by large numbers of residents of the county generally, who are not residents of the city, and use of non-residents by the city necessitates the enlargement or improvement or increases the cost of maintenance of said facilities, it may request financial assistance from the county. And it has to do that by a resolution passed by a four-fifths of all of its elected members.
All right, thank you. I wanted to highlight that because it might also be relevant in other situations. So I just wanted, I wanted to know, will we go with the county and the two by two to discuss this?
I've never heard of that before. So we certainly have a legitimate.
Well, get, all the saying is we have, we have, we're allowed to ask. It doesn't say that they're required to pay.
I get it. I, I know, but I didn't realize that there was such a, a number on the books. You know?
I don't even know why they passed that, and they just say we could do it. You know, it just seems kind of pointless, but that's okay. I, I do, I do want to note that our supervisor has, you know, for years, we have gone to the county and, and requested this. And for years, we have sat here and complained. I mean, 20, 30 years, complained about the, the, the cost of the pool, and, and even back when we built this new pool, that was a, you know, that was a major issue. And we did get a lot of support.
We got a lot, yeah.
We got a lot of my 400 and something, I think, to, to go with that. So this, they are not without participation, but for the ongoing, it's not there. And this is the first time ever that they have participated in an ongoing, above and beyond the $20,000. And I, and I know that Supervisor, I know this personally, Supervisor Thomas has worked extremely hard to, to get us to this point and to, to get this over the finish line in terms of working with our other supervisors to fund this. So this, it was a heavy lift.
All right. Any other questions? Public comment on this item, item 12.4?
I'm gonna break the rules of good conduct here, and I am going to swear. It is about damn time the county paid its share. I think.
Oh, I don't know whether, oh, my gosh.
I think we should send them the full bill, and if they send it back, and all they're willing to do is $77,000, we'll say, well, that's a lot better than the $20,000 you usually give us. But I think we should send them the full bill.
Thank you, Sue.
Might as well take a turn, Kathy Lishman. I know there's some discussion that people have said that the city needs to raise the rates to the county residents, but when that happens, people stop coming because there's only so much that families can afford. And so keep that in mind, too, that it doesn't work out to raise the rates for county residents.
Thank you, Kathy.
All right, I am closing public comment on this item. One question, Cleve. So are two options, if we decide that we do not want to change our ask to align with what the Board of Supervisors approved, our other option is to pass this resolution with the original amount, and then what happens?
The, the potential is that it doesn't match the amount that they approved, and therefore it goes back to the discussion and delays how it might be paid. They may come back and say, we're willing to this amount, but that's all, and, you know, request that you revise the amount. It's also possible that they say, okay, but we're only going to do this amount, and they, they pay it. But there's the potential that it gets bogged down with the, with their treasurer when they get to that point for the payment.
But if we have all the, the facts and figures, which apparently we have, you know, proof, I don't see, I, I agree with Sue. I think we ought to request the full amount because if we back down, and we haven't been given any official notice of what was given to us, and we've just heard it, right?
Well, I heard it from three different people, but.
I know, but it's hearsay. I mean.
No, it was in a.
I heard it from a supervisor, I heard it from Mr. Ashton, and I heard it from, actually from Joe Rand.
Yeah, it was in, it was in a public meeting where they were having a discussion about, and they were voting on how they want to see it show up in the budget, and it was a discussion, and it was a 5-0 vote to have that put into the budget.
I've got to say, I sympathize with the sentiment of wanting to go after the full amount, but I do think that if, you know, it was regarding energy costs, and whether or not that's maintenance, I, I can see the argument being made that, you know, whether there is 25% city residents, or, you know, 25 city residents, or 100 with 75 there, county residents, you're going to use the same amount of energy to heat a pool, which is, you know.
Well, as someone who's sat on the Park and Rec Commission for nine years, we've had the facts and figures for a very long time, and this is a huge step. I, I think we should go ahead with staff's recommendation, and we can make those arguments again next year, but there's a lot to argue about, and I don't think we should pick this one as our fight.
I personally think that we should go with the 78.5 out of respect for their efforts, and, and the effort that went into getting this, it's, I think it would be a poke in the nose if we didn't. And I think we should respectfully express our appreciation and willingness to work with us on this at 78.5.
76.5.
76.5.
I, I agree. I mean, we basically were, not, we'll say laughed at, but essentially it was like, thanks, but no thanks, you know, whatever we asked before. And to get to a 5-0 vote on this, I, yeah, I want to thank Supervisor Thomas, too, for, for help, really helped bringing this along, because that wasn't easy. I know that.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I appreciate the increase in funding. I'm going to continue pushing for more funding for the pool, but I, I appreciate.
And I, just to address what Kathy, we didn't have it, we weren't even considering raising the rates, were we, for county?
No.
I mean, I, I've considered it many times.
Quick, quick question. Do we need to do these, to adopt these two different resolutions separately?
We can do it all.
Okay. I would like to move that we adopt Resolution 1 as, as presented, and amend, adopt Resolution 2 to 76,500 in replacing 112,568, and otherwise as stated.
I'll second that motion.
All right, first and a second. Roll call, Regina.
Councilmember Barelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
All right, 12.5. This is approving a construction contract for Benham Street repaving, pavement rehabilitation project, and this needs.
Given the late hour, I'm going to make this really brief. So you may have noticed weather is headed for consistently warmer temperatures, which means pools and paving. So the item before you this evening proposes a Measure L-funded paving contract for Benham Street, which serves as the direct access to the city's beautiful Aquatic Center. In accordance with, in compliance with SEQA Sections 150, or 15301 Subsection B and C, related to existing facilities, the city did file a notice of exemption on November 3rd of last year to prepare for this project. The city also let out the paving contract as a bid package. It was prepared and let out as informal public bid on March 18th and opened bids on April 8th in accordance with Public Contract Code 22032B and 22034. The city received four bids, with the lowest responsible and responsive bidder being Doug Veerkamp, General Engineering, at $173,630, which is. which is the amount of the proposed contract before you this evening. It includes the base bid, as well as two bid alternates to enhance pedestrian crossings and improvements to both the aquatic center and the Placerville City Park on Benham. In addition to the proposed contract, staff also recommend, recommends a budget appropriation from Measure L construction reserve in accordance with its intended use. The additional budget would allow for adequate construction contingency should any unforeseen condition, conditions arise during construction, as well as outsourced construction inspections and testing for quality assurance. This concludes my verbal report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions for Rebecca?
Do you have a, is it too soon to know a date that you're going to be doing this?
My guess would be within the next two to three weeks. They were told they have to have it done by June first.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Sure.
Okay, I'm going to open this up to the public.
Sue Rodman, Measure H and Measure L, and this is a very, very good Measure L project, and Rebecca has moved heaven and earth to get this to happen this year before the Aquatic Center opens. So go.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, I will close public comment on twelve-point-five and bring it back to the council for a discussion or a motion.
I'll move twelve-point-five.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember No.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
All right. Twelve-point-six. This is to adopt a resolution. Oh, thank you, Rebecca, for making that project happen. Appreciate it. Um, okay. Twelve-point-six. Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to attend the Eldorado County Chamber Study Mission twenty-two twenty-two. And Ms. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I believe most of you are familiar with the Chamber Study Mission, which is an opportunity for businesses and public to go to different areas and observe how they are, how they do things, how they increase business, how they market their, their cities, and et cetera. This year, that is to St. Louis. It's my understanding that a couple of our council members were going to go, but things didn't work out, and they're now not able to. I was pressured, I'll say, a little bit, by the, the county executive director, the chamber executive director, Laura Brimbaum, to consider having someone from the city attend. She stated that they have representatives from Folsom Council and City Manager, Rancho Cordova Council and City Manager, and, but the Placerville Chamber had nobody from their city attending. So she requested that, that we consider sending someone. So that's the purpose of this item. I did put me in here just because of timing, getting this done. I want to emphasize that I'm open to another council member attending, if they would like to. It doesn't have to be me. But the cost is, for a single person, twenty-nine-hundred dollars, and we need to make the decision tonight, basically, or earlier. So that's the request before you, and I'm, well, happy to answer any questions if you have any regarding this.
All right. Any questions?
And I'll just say, this is such a deal. I've always paid my own way, so. I tell you, I have been on several of these studies, and they are great. They, they, you just gain so much knowledge, and I think Rancho Cordova folks have entered into the picture, but getting to know these folks, you know, they're, it's, it really, I know I've just met and still retain so many good friends with the Folsom Chamber through all this, and it, it, they're, it's well worth the trip, and I wish I was going, but unfortunately, it didn't work out, so.
I echo those sentiments. I'll leave it at that.
Same here. I, I really wish I was going, but it didn't work out.
Ditto. I'll be going to a, on a Secog one to Salt Lake City, and I'm saying, I'm just, you know, paying out of, paying out of pocket, but this one, you know, I couldn't make it. But I, I do think it's important that we're represented, so, you know, whether it's one of my colleagues or Cleve, I think it's, we need to be there.
All right. I'll open this up to the public, to our public.
Since no one's here, I can't help but saying, don't let Laurel put pressure on you for everything. She always wants to get her way, and she has a way of doing that, but I think, I think Pierre should go with, with Cleve.
And believe me, I've turned Laurel down many times, so.
All right. Closing public comment on this one. Bring it back to the council. Discussion, motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to send the city manager to St. Louis in the middle of summer.
Second. You didn't have to end.
You sound like you're familiar with the area.
Midwest.
All right. We have a first and a second.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember No.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful trip, Cleve.
Thank you.
We won.
All right. We are heading back to item nine, campaign signs.
All right. I, I asked this one to be polled, and I asked it to be on the agenda. And do you want to do a staff report, or you just want me to go?
To you.
Okay, I'll go with it. So the, the biggest, the one thing, the reason I brought this up, and the reason that it's, that I polled it, is that we have a campaign sign ordinance, basically, that's, that says people can put things wherever they want, anytime they want. Well, they can't. They say they can't, but if they do, we tell them that's a bad thing, and we go and, and we go and pick it up if we, you can get to it, and that's staff time. So we have staff time, as well as, as well as just the, the disrespect of public property where they're putting these signs, and it's not in accordance with our, with our policy. And I think that we should have some teeth to it. And I think we should have the system of associating the cost of our staff time, picking it up. We have, we have sign ordinances right now, encroachment, it's basically an encroachment on public property, and we have encroachment regulations right now. If you have, if you put your signs on public property, it's an encroachment, and if you don't have an encroachment permit, it's a thousand dollars a day fine, up to a thousand dollars a day fine. And, you know, but we have nothing for campaign signs, and we have nothing for people that put really big campaign signs out, that are beyond our regulations. And so we, I just feel like, you know, before we get into campaign season, people start pointing fingers, and all of a sudden, it becomes a campaign issue. I think we should address it now. And, and so that's my, I would like to see us consider something that, and I don't, I haven't done any research to see what other cities have done, and I don't know if anybody else has, but I do know that it's something that, and I know that's a touchy subject, subject, because you're, you know, you're, you're, we have the right to put signs up for, for.
George Sals.
Well, yeah, for political purposes, and to redress our government, and to things like that. So, you know, it's a balancing act, but we, we do have rules that you can't put them up prior, sixty days prior to an election, and you can't put them in certain places, but we have new rules saying what you can do with it. So that's what, that's what my ask is, is for us to consider a.
So you mean like in the form of fines?
Yes.
So can, can I have Pierre address that first? Because we do have the ability, I understand, to fine people for that, but I don't know how often we've done it, so if, maybe have him address that quickly, if you'd like.
Sure. I mean, it's part of, yeah. Excellent idea.
I will admit that with respect to political signs, we're a little less aggressive than we are with illegal commercial advertising signs. So with respect to political signs, if they're found to be in the right-of-way, we essentially will just try and attempt to call the owner, but we will, we will notify Public Works, and they will remove them from the right-of-way. And typically, we don't get into a situation where we're fining them. Usually with illegal commercial signs, we'll get into a situation where we're levying fines. We're being a little more aggressive on that, just based on what you were saying, Councilmember Thomas, with the cost of staff. So we will typically find someone that's putting up illegal banners and that sort of thing. We can, we will find them one dollar, or one dollar, one hundred dollars per day, per sign. We could, we could try and do the same for political signs, but it's usually an area where unless it's more egregious, we're a little soft on political signs.
It's about, to me, it's about being, having fairness for those people who are following the rules, putting their signs up, getting permission, not putting it on public property. And then there's the other people that just go willy-nilly and put them everywhere, and it happens. I think that there, there needs to be a, it's, it's about, a little bit about fairness, you know, people that follow the rules and people that don't. And I think there should be consequences, because I do know that our city clerk goes through great lengths to, to educate people who are running for public office on our rules and sign placing, sign placing and what they are in the city, so.
Well, they're, they're classified as temporary signs, and so per our code, we do have the ability to fine them a hundred dollars first offense, then we can move it up to two-hundred dollars, five-hundred dollars, and we can keep going up till it's a significant fine. We can do that.
My question is, what kind of staff time are we talking about? I, I mean, I agree with you about the fairness, but then there's the reality of our limited staff time, and is that how we want to best expend their time? So that's kind of what I would.
We would actually be getting reimbursed for their staff, for the time that the staff is going out doing it.
I'm asking staff that. I mean, there's only so much time your staff has. So you can get reimbursed, but if he's spending his time doing that, then he's not doing something else. And what I've seen this last year is Pierre's time is incredibly valuable to us, so, you know, I'm just questioning how it's going to affect other things that we're trying to get done with our long backlog of things that haven't come forward yet.
Pierre, would you like to address the staff time issue? Is there a lot of staff time going towards sign removal right now? Or would it take a lot of staff time if we wanted to prioritize that and, and, you know, search down who owns these signs to fine them?
We have to do that on any code violation. We have to identify who the property owner is. It's typically the property owner that we're going to go after, because it would have been the property owner that gave permission for the signs to be there in the first place. So we can be just more aggressive with just levying a much greater fine that's, that we're allowed to under our ordinance.
Just to speak to that really quickly, the city has greater rights in regulating commercial signs versus non-commercial right, uh, signs that are protected by the First Amendment, political signs being one of them. With respect to an encroachment on the public right-of-way, the reason I, I think the fine is so much greater is because there needs to be an encroachment permit, and so the actual violation is failure to obtain an encroachment permit. And so that becomes relevant, because any ordinance that the council makes a misdemeanor, we can impose greater fines. But if the violation is an infraction, we are limited to a hundred dollars for the first day, first offense, and then it escalates to two-hundred dollars, up to five-hundred dollars per day, but we cannot go above and beyond that. The other thing is, this is an issue in all of my jurisdictions as well. One of the most difficult aspects of enforcement is off-site signs that the property owner has no idea that signs are placed on. And so the, I, I think one thing that we've, we've done that you might want to consider is you take, you know, pictures before and after, and you kind of do global letters to people with vacant property to monitor it, but it's very difficult to be able to ascertain who placed those signs, because they're essentially trespassing, too, but it's, it's not necessarily the candidate, is what I'm trying to say.
So you don't, so it's not a function of dealing with the candidate? It's a function of dealing with the property?
Right. Well, the candidate does not have control over who places their signs on property. And so we cannot necessarily hold a candidate responsible for placement of their signs when they had no control over who placed it, where they placed it, when they placed it.
So I just call some guy to go around and place a bunch of signs at night, and they're all over the place, and it's pretty much, that's, that's okay.
What is, another option that some cities do is they require, or they ask, that candidates acknowledge and sign this agreement with the city, saying that, you know, I understand that I, I don't have control over people who are supporting me, but I will commit to removing these signs within fifteen days after the election. I will commit to helping the city to remove signs that are located in improper places so that we can get some buy-in from them, but that's pretty much as far as we can go on that.
But we can issue fines. That is, within our power, it may be logistically challenging because of the reasons that you just outlined.
Correct. And, and the fines would just go through an administrative citation process, which is fairly quick, but you'd have to figure out who did it.
Okay. Would I, I agree that it is a fairness issue. It's also just a sightliness issue. I, I like that our window of political signs is short in the city. I don't like a lot of signs everywhere all the time, so, you know, it's kind of a quality of life thing, but it is also definitely a fairness thing when it comes to having fair elections. So I, I think a good solution would be to add, you know, we, we currently have fines available to us as a tool to make sure that that is communicated to the candidate when they're filing all their paperwork as kind of part of the informational package that Regina provides candidates. And to also have a statement, like Ms. Ibrahimee just suggested, that candidates, you know, acknowledge that the city will remove signs that are improperly placed and try to get some of their buy-in.
I'm not sure, excuse me, that our problem has been, I mean, I'm just, the, with our council, I don't think that's our problem, but I've noticed signs up already, you know, all along Placerville Drive, and those are the signs that I think that don't get picked up. Because they, they have a whole bunch of little ones, and they just stick them all over, you know?
I was just going to say the same thing. It's not so much the folks that come in, you know, to the city. It's, it's congressional, it's statewide offices, it's, you know, presidential candidates that people, you know, the local parties go and put out signs throughout the city.
Right.
So, yeah, I, I would agree. It's really outside entities, although, you know, I've obviously seen people running for city council that have had them illegally, too. The other part, too, is people put them on private property. I mean, they're on real estate signs, or on, you know, telephone or lighting poles, things like that. I mean, there's actually political companies that, that's specifically what they do, like Cog South and in the greater Los Angeles area. I mean, those guys probably make hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in political sign placement, and that's everywhere where they go, is basically on private property, because they know just steer clear of, of government property right-of-ways, because they don't want to get whacked with a fine or a, a letter, because a letter sometimes is more damaging to a, a campaign than anything else. Like, you don't want a thing that says, oh, in the city of whatever, you know, you got a bunch of illegal signs, and that's, because that's pretty, you know, from a political, I mean, from a, you know, I, I, well, why, as a political person, I hate signs anyways. They don't, no sign has ever won an election, let me just put it to you that way. And, but it's, candidates love them, because it's candidates. It's, signs don't, I mean, we can ask a couple of local people here.
And it's, you know, sometimes it's not the signs that are, it's those paper things that they stick on all the telephone poles, and, you know, that's more of a.
We're, we're digressing here slightly.
We're digressing.
And, and it's, since I'm not going to get my way, I'm going to just pout, and I think that we have the appropriate things to, to, to address this if we feel that, although I do like the idea of having something that they, a, a greater sense of acknowledgement and recognition of our, and even to acknowledgement that there are fines associated with them if, that we can determine, make that determination.
Yeah, I mean, I think if there's an egregious, like, I remember last cycle, there was a sign, I think it was someone running for Congress that had it up on the chain link fence around our, the parking off of Ray Lawyer, and it was super egregious, because it was like on, on our, our city parking.
Right.
And, and so. And so I think things like that really do, should have a higher level of.
But you still don't know who placed it.
No, it could have been a volunteer, and in likelihood, it probably was a volunteer that did it.
But you still should be able to call.
But you can write, you can do a letter back to the campaign, saying, hey, somebody put up a sign with your name on it.
And they're responsible.
We can wag our finger.
Exactly.
So I'll, I'll go ahead and open this up to the public.
We aren't LA, so what goes on down there doesn't necessarily happen here. We're not sure who puts the sign up. And I think that they need to be asked to take them down. To me, I see it as an education. If you allow it to happen, it's going to get worse and worse and worse, and it always does. I think an education, I think having them sign something. I'd be happy to send letters and volunteer in Pierre's department to people who sign something, and in fact, I filled out an application to volunteer once when he needed help, and then COVID hit, so. Anyway, I think it's not, and the local parties could maybe be called and asked if they'd take signs down for someone out of the area who sticks them up all over town, which happens all the time, and it doesn't, it isn't necessarily, you know, state candidates that, that do it. So I think education is the big thing. I also think, and something, people who are not running in Placerville will put signs in here too, like they might be running in District Two, or is that something that we can ask them to remove their signs to?
Sure.
I think that if you let it go, it just gets worse, and you can't control it. And anyway, I'd be happy to write letters. I'd be happy to be deputized to take signs down. And I think if, you know, there was a time set aside, I don't think staff time, and it wouldn't be Pierre. It's not the fining that I'm hoping we can get, it's just the education and expectations. Thanks.
Sue Rodman, Measure H and Measure L. And Measure H and Measure L both had signed campaigns all throughout the city, and we were told by the city clerk how they had to be, what size they had to be, where we could put them, and we were very careful to obey all those rules. And when the election was over, and we won, we took all the signs down. And so it's partly, it's a part of being responsible for your own politics and responsible for your, for where you live, and to keep the clutter down to a minimum. So while signs may not win an election, I think that the signs we had for Measure H and Measure L certainly helped.
Thank you, Sue. All right, so let's wrap this up. I, I do think that more education would be helpful in letting candidates know that there are possible fees, and making sure that they realize that they're responsible for their sign placement and taking them down.
I would move that we give staff direction to kind of draft an education letter that would more clearly spell out the, the consequences and the request that we ask them to respect our community and by placing them in the appropriate places.
All right, we have a motion.
Yeah, it's more of a direction.
Do we need to do the whole thing?
No. Yeah, this was.
Just give staff direction, head nod.
Yep, I'm good with that. Everyone else? All right, okay.
Well, it's just that you have so many people running for so many different offices, that it's just like, it's almost impossible.
Who do we send the letters to?
I don't know, I mean, I.
So one point of contact that we can actually influence the, influence the deal, and then after that, it's kind of a, all.
And I think if you, you know, I mean, the candidates and their parties, they give these signs out to people, they could just staple a little instructions on it about where you can and can't put it, to their supporters, you know, I mean, they.
Well, maybe we should send it to the Republican and Democratic headquarters.
That's not.
They could pass.
Not quite how it works, but that's fine.
Where they could pass it out.
Send it to the president.
I think it's important to set expectations.
Okay, moving on.
Thank you for bringing that up.
That's your job, Pierre. You're welcome.
All right.
I'm going to go pout now. It is.
It's 10 o'clock, you gotta do that, 10 o'clock.
I'd like to move that we continue, we don't have that much left, continue our meeting until we're done. It's after 10.
None of us have any meetings, so.
Yep.
All right.
We'll get a second. I'm sorry, that's your job.
I'll second that motion.
All right, first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item 13, El Dorado County Transit Authority.
Well, since we skipped this last time, there is something. We approved our preliminary operating and capital budget for 2223, informed an ad hoc committee to review the budgets.
All right, thank you. El Dorado County Transportation Commission.
No, it just, the work continues on the.
Nothing. Oh, the, the, there was one thing that, the, well, no, it doesn't matter for the city.
The Go to Green and the, and the Camino project were the two main ones that we heard.
What we mean next week.
I will say, I've, I've taken the commuter a few times in the last, until we've last discussed this, and there are more people actually getting back on and traveling.
Great, that's good news.
So it's actually good to see, yeah. I've, I'm not the only person on it. There's actually, you know, like a third full, so that's actually pretty good.
Labco.
We did not have a meeting last month. Our meeting's tomorrow night.
Okay, Secog.
I mean, nothing really, I mean, we had a large discussion about the regional trail network. You know, it's something that we want to get done. It's going to take a gazillion dollars to get done in many, many years, so, to be continued.
Gazillion.
Gazillions.
Pioneer.
Nothing to report.
Fire Safety Council.
Pretty much what we've talked about in the past is that they're concentrating on, as Sue reminded all of us, to get people to clear their property, and we're, all kinds of different ways of offering help, and.
Is there funds available for chipping still?
Well, we, we still have the $5,000 that the, but in the last discussion, it was that that $5,000 is really pittance when it comes to those machines, et cetera, so they're thinking, you know, and, and also another thing they're doing is combining with other, you know, departments, fire safety councils, and going after the big grants, and also then figuring out, maybe there's just something else that we also could do with that. I suggested to them, even though I'm really not officially on there, but I, I suggested, you know, there's a lot of people around here that just plain can't afford to do anything, and maybe we could get a city, get different groups to volunteer to go out. I know that Kathy is, has, works with the seniors, and I know that the veterans group have theirs too, but there's people that fall in between that, that need help, and, you know, maybe that's something that we could, you know, so, I don't know. Anyway, they're, and we're also talking about raising funds, so.
They are, they are a busy council, I will say that.
Two by two has not met. Opportunity knocks, continuum of care.
It meets the end of the month, so that, next week.
Okay. Requests for future agenda items? Nine, city manager and staff reports, nothing to add. Okay, upcoming items, I will let folks read over those at their leisure. It's on the agenda, item 16. So item 17 is adjournment, it is 10, 12.
Everybody go home.
So with that, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you, thank you for being here, for those that stayed all the way through. Staff.